Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for June 5th, 2018. If we could call the roll, please?
Councilmember Luce?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Mokel?
Here.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, approval of the agenda. There any changes, deletions, additions, Mr. Reynolds?
Not to this agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Counselor Mokel?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead to consent item. Couple items here today. Any changes, deletions, additions, Mr. Reynolds?
Not from staff, sir.
Okay. Counselor Lehman?
The consent agenda is presented. Second.
I have a motion for the consent agenda as presented in a second. Before, Counselor Luce? Moving a little quick. I'd like to take 4C1 off. 4C1, is that it?
Yep.
Okay, and I...
Yes, it's okay with the motion maker.
Okay, and a second then?
Yes.
Okay. So 4C1 will be removed from consent. I have a motion and a second now for the modified consent agenda. Before we vote, we will read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for June 5th, 2018. 4A1 approves the minutes of the May 15th, 2018 meeting. 4A2 approves all liquor licenses for 2018 and 19 and waives the requirements of City Code Section 114.021 for Global Restaurant Group Incorporated doing business as Dangerfields, Stone Brook Golf Club, LLC, and Knights of Columbus Home Association Incorporated conditioned upon compliance with all licensing requirement. 4B1 approves a contract with Twin City Tile &amp; Marble an amount not to exceed $32,200 to replace tile and related work in the community center locker rooms. And 4D1 authorizes execution of an agreement with the Metropolitan Council to participate in 2018 citizen assisted monitoring program.
Thank you very much. The modified consent agenda has been read into the record. I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to recognize any citizen that would like to come forward on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Welcome and good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Mary Isaacson. You know I'm here. We need a parking lot right centrally located in downtown Shakopee between Home Street and Lewis Street. It would be a parking lot that would take care of all the businesses around it, just not one side nor the other. It encompasses all of it. I've had so many people come in and ask me why there is no parking lot there. They see it, they want it, and I say, "I'm not a council member." I said, "Call them up and tell them what you want." I've heard many complaints that they want to go down, grab dinner, there's no parking, they're not going to stay, they're not going to walk two blocks to quick grab dinner. If someone needs a bike fixed, they're not going to haul their bike two blocks so they can take it to the bike store. If somebody wants to run into Valley Sports and quick pick something up, they are not going to park two, three blocks away so they can walk there to pick their thing up and walk. They're just going to keep going. We live in a society that it's instant, and I think that the city has to conform to... I said when the city was built, nobody had cars, or if they did, they had one. They built the city back in 1800 and whatever with that mind. They didn't build that households were going to have two cars, three cars, busy. They did not build the town around the vehicles. They built the town because they wanted the town. And so I'm just here again to push that I really think we could have a nice parking lot there. I think we could put some green space in there. I think we can have picnic tables there. I think that the people would use it because it's centrally located. And again, there is no parking downtown. And I don't know if you have any proposals, any offers yet on that piece of property, but again, I'm going to reiterate, if something is going in there, then they better provide parking because there is not enough downtown. And when I mean downtown, I'm talking north of Second Avenue. You know, so...
Thank you for your persistence.
Thank you. Oh, I'm persistent. I'm just going to keep going with this.
Thanks for coming back, Mary. Have you thought about getting a petition or something put together, preferably Shakopee residents and customers?
I have asked. I said, "I've asked a couple people, what's it going to take? Do you want me to get a petition because I can? I can, we will fill it up. But how many is it going to take? How many names do you want that it's even going to make an impact on you?"
I'd like to see what you've come up with, I guess.
I mean, do you want me to go door, knock in door to door? And I will do that. I can do that. I know a lot of people that would help me do that. But is it going to make an impact? I mean, is that what you're looking for?
It'd be nice to see something, I guess.
Yeah. I have absolutely no problem with it. And like I said, I know I've asked a couple people, I mean, should I get a, should I do a petition? Because I know every one of the people that come and visit us would sign it. I mean, that's just not even a, and I'm talking all ages, you know. I know everyone says, you know, when you live in Minneapolis, well, first off, we don't live in Minneapolis. Okay? And if I go to a football game, I know I'm going to have to walk. I plan accordingly to get a parking space and walk to the game and whatever. You know you're going to do that. When you come downtown Shakopee, you shouldn't have to plan to be there two hours early in order to get a parking spot to go and grab a burger at Turtles. You just want to get in and get out. You know, that's where I'm having my issues with is, don't compare us to anywhere else.
Don't compare to another city?
Yeah. We're Shakopee. I mean, this is where we live, this is where we work and we play and we do all this stuff. We do it here in Shakopee. I mean, everyone knows, I don't drive. I don't like driving. If I want something, I'm going to take care of Shakopee first. I'm going to go to the Shakopee stores. I'm going to do my business in Shakopee. And I'll go kicking and screaming if I have to go to Eden Prairie or because I like my town. And that's where I want to stay. But again, if I want a quick run and get something and there's not any parking available, I'm one of them, well, I'll just come back another day. Or it's going to be faster for me to go to Eden Prairie to get it because they have a parking lot, you know, in front of their store. So that's all I'm just trying to...
Thank you.
I just want to make everybody happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens that would like to come forward? Please state your name and address for the record.
Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Mike Beard, 8434 Horizon Drive, Shakopee. I'm here tonight paying a courtesy call on behalf of the county board. I'm here as a county commissioner this evening. I'm sorry for the casual dress, but we just had a volunteer appreciation picnic down at the fairgrounds. Had about 130 people show up for burgers and dogs so we could say thanks for staffing all the volunteer commissions and boards and things they do to make our jobs a little more informed. But I'm glad to be here tonight. I've got just a couple of things, if you want a couple of updates from county business that affects Shakopee and the citizens we represent. First of all, I haven't seen you for a couple of months. I've been running back and forth to the Capitol while the legislature's in session. Nobody is safe, and we're actually trying to do some useful things. So we did get a couple of pieces of legislation passed that we've been working on quietly to do with, some with recycling and some with some stormwater ponding. We needed some policy, actually law changes with Minnesota Pollution Control, and I'm grateful that Representative Loonan was able to get those through as individual bills so they didn't get caught up in the ominous omnibus bill and get vetoed at the end. They seem like little things, but they really do drive down costs and increase the effectiveness of some of the things we're trying to do when we're managing stormwater on the 41169 project. Probably saved the county taxpayers over a million dollars just with one policy change. And with our recycling things, you know, folks like at Demcon and some of the other people that are involved in the recycling stream are now able to participate because it's actually to their economic advantage for certain kinds of recyclables, and they'd been kind of locked out of the grant program until we got the policy change. We also asked for some bonding money for a couple of capital things that the county's involved in that have some impact on Shakopee. One thing is the mental health emergency facility called the Ertz Facility. Savage has already set aside some property off of County Road 16 for, I think it's 16 beds. This is a radically, a radical departure from the status quo and actually is a very good thing as we've been working with our police departments and the sheriff's department to try to decriminalize people who are having a psychotic episode or some sort of a mental breakdown, setting, hauling them off to St. Francis or to jail or trying to wait for a bed in Duluth or Fargo. We're going to have 16 beds right across the hill from my house in Savage. We've got a million point nine to help make that happen. We appreciate the work that I think Senator Pratt really carried the water for us on that. Also, one of the core functions of government is protecting life and making sure justice happens. And so we deal, we don't have our own coroner anymore. Most counties don't because it's gotten so technical and so precise and so expensive that we're actually in a 35-year partnership with Hennepin and Dakota Counties. We're building a new state-of-the-art medical examiner facility just across the river off County Road 62, Highway 62 and 494 at the old Glenwood Sanatorium. And we were able to score another 15 million this year, which means the capital infusion from the taxpayers of Shakopee would be somewhat less than $2 million for a 35-year project. Means that our police departments and funeral homes and anybody that have a need can send deceased persons who require that kind of attention to that medical examiner facility. So that was another success. Another one that came through in a transportation bonding, Transportation Force in the Bonding Bill was some money for our friends in Chanhassen and Carver County for the 101 segment of the highway from the big roundabout over there that we all love to be annoyed at. Well, 101 up through the bluff line to the top of the hill now has its funding in place and they'll be working on some final design. Hopefully dirt will be flying here within the next 24 months and the last segment of 101 up into Chanhassen will be underway. So there were some good things that were done while we were busy running back and forth over there. Speaking of transportation, Ames Construction was the lead contractor on the 35W rebuild. Fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you look at it, Ames has committed to Mindot to keep six lanes of traffic open during construction, which just overjoyed the Metro District Engineer who never was a fan of restriping the Bloomington Ferry Bridge. Darn it. We all know the benefit it is to our morning commute when we have that extra lane on the ferry bridge, and we thought we could get one for about 24 months, but now they're saying, "Oh, not so fast." If Ames actually can hold six lanes during construction on 35W over the next three years or so, they don't see the need to restripe the ferry bridge. Darn it. So we'll be continuing to work behind the scenes and see if we can't find some sympathetic gear over there that can restripe the bridge whenever that construction actually starts, which I think is later this year or early next spring. Let's see. I think our staffs are working, Mr. Mayor, on the crosswalk project that's been, you know, we've had some issues around the high school, but as our county highway department has looked at County Road 16 all the way from Mary's Town Road all the way to my end of town out on County Road 18, I think there are six schools on that strip. And so rather than just do a patchwork piece at the high school, we're looking at the entire corridor and having a consistent pedestrian protection crosswalk system from one end to the other. I won't speak for staff because I just got a brief update as I was heading out the door this morning, but it sounds like they're coming to conclusions on what kind of equipment, what kind of installation that's going to look like. The company that actually produces the posts and the signage needs to have the purchase order here pretty quick if it's going to go in yet this year before next school year. But the fond hope was that that would be being constructed over the summer and be ready to go before the school season starts September. Is that when we still start them? I don't know. It's been a while since I've been in school, so... Anyhow, that's a brief update from what we're up to with the county. Thank you for being partners with us, with me, in particular as I represent Shakopee and trying to do the people's business here. Appreciate your partnership, and Mr. Mayor, if there's any questions, especially if they're easy ones, I'm happy to take them.
Counselor Lehman?
Mr. Beard, the 169 striping, the meeting that we were at together when we got the presentation before Ames got the contract, Mindot was telling us that they were going to wait and see where the traffic pattern shifted to, and if the natural shift was to 169, they would consider restriping.
Yeah.
Is that still their position or has it changed?
I think, in my optimism, I read consider restriping as probably restriping. What I'm hearing now, since Ames has made the presentation to Mindot that if they got the contract, part of their value added was they would keep six lines open, it's now probably not. So I think it's shifted to, not in our favor.
And just for those listening, when you say 16 from both ends, a lot of our residents see it as 17th Avenue?
Correct. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that we're talking about the same stretch because there is a lot of concern out there around schools, school classes.
17th Avenue and County Road 16, Mr. Mayor, council, are the same street, and it includes Jackson Heights, the high school, let's see, probably something with Windermere, probably something with Sunpath, Saks, and then on my end of town Eagle Creek. So there's six facilities we need to pay attention to there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Beard, thanks for coming, giving us this update. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
One point on the 169 bridge, I would like to hope we could be thinking a little farther ahead and expand capacity completely, but I think we're, that's a few more years down the line. But I want to talk a little bit about the mental health facility and appreciate all that we can do for this community on that. And would like, if any time you need a letter of support, I think this body, in my opinion, would support that if that's needed.
Thank you, Mr. Beard.
I do want to point out Shakopee put in our own bonding request this year, and unfortunately that kind of got left by the wayside, and I know that's one thing that in my term here, we've never asked for anything in the bonding request. So that would really help out the community as far as our biking community and mobility issues, since we are such trail connections and since we're such an entertainment community, I think that would have been a good fit along with the issues that the historic burials in the area, that was a real sensitive area, so we were hoping to get a little more out of that. So I know that kind of got left off, and I know that's not your issue, but if you can help us.
You're referring to the bridge in Memorial Park?
Right, right.
Yes, yeah. That's a DNR issue and, ugh, it's...
Well, you've beat those guys up in the past, so any help we can get with that.
Counselor Mokel?
Well, I won't reiterate what the other councilmember said, but I do want to go back to 169 because I just called Mr. Reynolds this morning. I was going to bring it up during other business for the last week and a half. It's been 25 minutes to get from Crest Avenue onto the ramp. So, and I'm assuming that a lot of that is from Flying Cloud Drive because it's closed there, and it's pushing traffic that way. So I think 25 minutes just to get on the ramp is pretty significant, so if we can help, get your help in pushing that along, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, I live just off of Crest Avenue, off the old 18 there, and I have learned that if I'm not on the road by 6:30, I might as well stay home and drink coffee till 8:30 because it takes just as long to get across the bridge.
Exactly.
You bring up a good point. Highway 61 in Hennepin County is being rebuilt. That should be done hopefully next summer, and boy, is that going to be a blessing to the citizens of Shakopee. Anybody that has to go to the southwest quadrant, that's the secret backdoor to get there, and it'll be pretty sweet when that happens. And then, of course, 101 through the bluff is even better, so...
Been waiting a long time for the widening of the one alongside the hill there.
Yes.
Long, long time. That would be a great conduit.
If I can mention, Counselor Whiting brought up a little bit about, just mentioned the long-term vision for 169. The county did participate in a study that took two years to complete with Hennepin County. We were actually the lead funder to kind of get a seat at the table. You've just kind of got to play that way sometimes, I guess. We're looking for any and all options to increase capacity across the 169 corridor. So we looked at minpass lanes, we looked at bus rapid transit, we looked at new general purpose lanes and some things like that. I served on that committee, and you know I'm a roads and bridges guy. I like people being able to drive their cars and live their lives, and my insistence that we add a fourth and fifth, or third, be a third and, fourth and fifth lane, fifth and sixth lane, fifth and sixth lane, that's it. Six-lane freeway. Build a real freeway before you start monkeying with the transit stuff. Well, that got shot down in flames several times, every time I brought it up, with enthusiasm by my transit friends who look at automobiles differently than I do. However, what we did get out of the final study, surprise, surprise, was minpass lanes from Marshall Road to 494 have a cost index that is very beneficial, they think. And in addition, while they're rebuilding it, they're going to do like they did with 35E through St. Paul, surprise, surprise, auxiliary lanes start showing up. So a lane is carried through across the ferry bridge, for instance, to Pioneer Trail, which had a pretty positive impact on relieving congestion in the mornings. A third lane will be carried from Anderson Lakes all the way down to the ferry bridge. That sounds like the sixth lane to me, but you can't call it that. It's an auxiliary lane. So there is some planning that's, they're laying tracks for the next 10 or 12 years, and there will be some of those benefits that will accrue. Just oh, by the way, one thing that really surprised me was whenever these bright young engineers, most of whom weren't born when the ferry bridge was built, said, "Well, it'll be too expensive to build a bridge up the middle and have like a minpass lane or a reversible commuter lane." And I said, "Well, why? We already built the footers. The footings are already in the ground." And they said, "Wow, they had no idea. Well, when we built the ferry bridge, we put the footings in the ground, so all we'd have to do would be build the towers and hang the trusses." That, all, that's all you'd have to do, yeah, of course. But still, it was astonishing to those of us that have been around the block for more than 20 years that these young folks in these engineering companies had no idea that the ferry bridge was built to be expanded and the footers are already there. So just an interesting factoid.
Commissioner Beard, thank you very much for...
You're welcome, guys.
...your insights and look at things, and thank you very much.
You're welcome. Right now.
This is a portion of the agenda where any citizen can come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda. If you'd like to come forward on an item not on the agenda. Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll move ahead then to item number six, business removed from consent. 4C1, Commissioner Luce. Counselor Luce?
Yeah, a while back, I thought we, this body, had consensus that, is there somewhat a representative here from the person requesting this?
I don't believe so. Mr. Kurski?
And I thought we had agreed that, you know, if someone doesn't show up when something's on the docket, that we're not going to deal with it. And, you know, I don't see anybody here. Another thing is, you know, this has been scheduled, or advertised for weeks, and that's going to happen tomorrow. I mean, come on, there's got to be a little more lead time. Somebody's dropping the ball here. I mean, this is ridiculous. You know, they, I'm sure they scheduled that wagon and horse team many months ago, about it six months to get them here. You know, somebody should have brought this forward, at least with the last council meeting. Why wait until the day before?
Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the street closure of First Avenue between Somerville and Home Street on Wednesday, June 6th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. for a Clydesdale event.
Second.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 41. Thank you very much. Moving ahead, we will now stand in recess for the Economic Development Authority meeting. Stand in recess.
Call the Shakopee Economic Development Authority, June 5th meeting to order. Please note the roll. Should all have the agenda in front of you, packet. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, President Lehman. We are removing 4B, the contract to purchase 126 Atwood Street, from the EDA agenda.
Okay. Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer the modified consent, or modified agenda.
I do have one question on a consent item.
Is there a second to the motion before we get there?
On the agenda.
Second.
Second by Kathy. Mr. Whiting?
Just a question on, we're paying for the, let me find it here.
You, we're not at the consent agenda yet, Mr. Whiting.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
We can take that off the agenda if you have questions.
Go ahead, continue on.
Anybody, any discussion on approving the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mr. Whiting?
And I'm trying to find it here. It was the bill for the corridor project. Le France Concrete Construction has requested payment for the downtown, well, that isn't it, the front page.
So let's...
So I guess I'm asking is why, I'd like to see the study before we're paying for it.
Okay, let's remove item 3A from the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Okay? Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer the modified consent business, which is 3B.
3B, the meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Meeting minutes, EDA meeting minutes.
There's a second by Mr. Luce. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, let's do 3A bill list and see what the, Mr. Whiting?
Yeah, as I stated, the SRF Consulting Group, just a point of a question, I'd like to see the project before we pay for it, I guess, but...
Okay. Mr. Whiting, are you talking about the RSF Consulting Group?
SRF.
Payment 2 for the area-wide transportation study?
Yes.
So you want to see the documentation?
Well, I just thought I'd like to see the study before we pay for it.
Okay, all right. Is there any problem with us tabling this item to the next meeting?
Mr. President, board members, so that's only a partial payment. They are wrapping up the study right now, but they had a lot of work they had to do upfront, so that's a pretty substantial contract.
Okay, I can accept that.
So I think what I'm hearing him ask for, and if there's consensus, is we'd like to see what the scope of the study is, not necessarily the results of the study, but what's the area?
Well, I understand the area. We've talked about that, but I just hate paying for something before we see it, you know. I'm sure that it'll be comprehensive and everything, but...
Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, this is not final payment, though.
No.
Right.
Mr. President and board members, no, this is a partial payment that, they're on a tight timeframe because in July, you'll get a copy of the entire report, and so we're still meeting with our county partners and working through issues.
Which raises a question. If there's questions that we have in the study, once the study's complete, it's hard to ask them questions and have them incorporated into the study. It's much easier when it's ongoing.
I will defer to the city engineer, but I believe that this is a pretty comprehensive study. The direction was made pretty clear that we need to get all the ducks in a row before we come back to you, particularly the participation from the county. The study's not done yet. We're actually meeting this week to talk about those issues, so you will see the complete study and it'll be in a draft form, but we're not close yet.
I don't want to hold this project up, so I would move to approve the bill in the amount of $68,274.36 from the EDA fund, which allows for the internal charges that are applied to the EDA fund.
Second by Ms. Mokel?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other discussion on this topic?
The motion is just to approve this list, which was, the whole bill list was removed from the, the weekend.
Correct, but he's.
That was the only question I had.
Well, we've passed this motion, and then we'll.
The, the motion is to approve the bills?
Yeah.
All.
In their entirety.
In, I'm apologizing, yeah.
Is that, is that your understanding, Ms. Mokel?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, good. Good clarification.
Question now? Question?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item four A, River Bluff Development. And what's the pronunciation of that name?
The Gone Companies?
Gone Companies? Mr. Kurski?
Mr. President and members. Bear with me two seconds. So we're here tonight to talk about the proposed River Bluff Development. The Gone Companies responded to our request proposals earlier this year. They've been working on designs for several months. They did expand the site after an adjoining property owner expressed interest in selling, and they oriented the project more towards the river. It's approximately one-hundred-and-twenty-five units of market rate housing with underground parking and a restaurant location on the river, so it's a truly mixed-use project. This is, we have the developer here, and he can answer specifics, but I thought I'd run through the, quickly through the slides, and then we can come back if he has specific questions. So this is the proposed site and the development on the river. This is the underground portion of the parking garage. We did work with the developer from a design standpoint to buffer the project along First Avenue and also along the river. So the main entrance for the residence is actually on the riverfront, so there's a two-story lobby to generate a lot of pedestrian activity along the river. This, again, this is the second level of that lobby with the elevators going up to the units. You can see on First Avenue, there are basically townhouses that cover up the parking garage, so it cannot be seen. And then there's a thirty-five-hundred square foot restaurant that would be facing the river. And as you move up in the project, that restaurant's actually two stories tall. You'll see in the renderings, it's a pretty big volume, because they thought it was important to give good views to the river. And it's a mixture of El Cove units, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. So this is the elevation. We also worked with the developer to make sure that there was ways for pedestrians to get up into the building, not just through the main lobbies. You'll notice there's a theme of separate entrances for units along the, the street with stairways. On the far right's kind of the main entrance. On the far left on this north elevation is the restaurant. Should have a plaza that would overlook the river. And these are the Scott Street North. This, there's a pretty good fall to this site from First Street to the river, so they've taken advantage of that by tucking some of the parking under the building there. And then along First Avenue West is where you see the townhomes, so the building actually steps back from the street. This is a conceptual rendering. One of the other things that the developers have been working on is a outdoor area for the residents, so they could also have some views. So there's a common area. You can see that sunscreen up in the corner. That's a common area for the people that live in the building. This is a shot looking at the restaurant, so it's on a raised platform. The parking is underneath. And as, again, I said, it's a two-story space, and they've really tried to put a lot of balconies and rhythm to the building to try and open it up towards the river. And again, this is along First Avenue West, showing the townhomes that would actually have access at grade. And this is a render, artist's rendering, kind of the, the drone view along the river. It's pretty much in scale to some of the other projects that have been built in the area. Just talk a little bit about the site. So it's roughly one-point-six acres. We have, per year agreement, we did do some pretty significant geotechnical work on this site. If you remember, WSB did some initial borings, probably late last year, early this year. We then hired TerraCon Consulting through our new contracting services. They are specialists in geotechnical work. One of the things we found is this is kind of what the site really looks like. So there's a very large piece of bedrock under basically doggy doos in that house.
We're, we're seeing a black screen here.
Yeah, screens just went out.
Interesting. It looks like.
There we go.
There we go, okay.
There we go. Sorry. There's a very large piece of bedrock that's been identified. They're out, they just did additional borings this week through the bedrock to see how deep it is. And they found a very large trash pit in the rear, which runs anywhere from nine feet to fourteen feet deep. Has everything from old construction materials to bottles to organic waste that's rotting. Definitely not something that could support a building. It's also, their initial analysis is they did drill through that road and found the road is deteriorating quickly because it's sitting on top of trash. So one of the big parts of this project will be probably excavating a lot of that trash pit out of the site. It's not stable to put it nicely, because it is decaying organic waste. We're also doing some environmental sampling of it right now to make sure there's no asbestos or other things that might have been dropped into that large hole. It does go all the way into the trail in the park area, so we would have to do some remediation in that area. So it's a pretty large pit. We were told in the late eighteen hundreds, this was a stone quarry, and their solution was to fill it in with garbage, so. So you'll be seeing a public hearing for a TIF proposal in July. So the EDA would recover its property acquisition cost and our site investigation costs. The city would have some stormwater improvements that would need to be done, street improvements, particularly Levy Drive is gonna have to be rebuilt, whether this project moves forward or not. There are some utility relocations that need to be done. We are working with Spuck to actually remove the power lines that are along the River Bluff and put them into a shared underground conduit that would run down and reconstruct a Levy Drive to get those power poles out of the view corridor for the entire length of Levy Drive. And then there would be some pedestrian improvements on bluff because of the bad soils there. We would take most of that out and kind of build in some better pedestrian improvements. From the developer's standpoint, they would be working on site remediation, so they have a similar site they can talk about where they've run into a similar problem, an old trash dump, and it's thirty to forty dollars a yard. That cannot go to another fill. It has to go to a certified waste facility. Also blasting out a significant amount of that bedrock, and they would be responsible for the building remediation and demolition and doing the sidewalks and streetscaping. So I'm happy to introduce one of the partners here from the Gone Companies, and they have their architects here, and they can answer specific questions you have about the project.
Questions of staff? Jay?
A couple of things. In a couple of the preliminary discussions, we talked about abandoning that portion of Levy Drive, and I see that this is, development hasn't looked at that, and I, I appreciate that, but is that still a potential?
We, we can ask the developer and the architect. I think what they prefer to do is keep that as an access point. Particularly on Scott Street, they have their main garage entrance there. They also felt having at least one side of parking on Levy Drive will help activate that street. So we do have a restaurant, so we'll have people at night actually parking their cars there. They've developed several ways for people to get into that restaurant, so they don't have to go through the actual apartment building. But we think that that will help both from a public perception of safety in that area, but also it will really provide some activity in the area to have people walking around at night on the street.
Mr. Chair, if I, one more question. We talked a little bit about the bedrock, and in the past, we've also talked about riverbank stabilization. With this project, is that limestone that's removed from the, the area, is that something we could work with the DNR and you, and use it for some of the riverbank stabilization right in the area, so we don't have to do all the transportation costs?
Mr. President, board members, that's something we can certainly look at. We'll have a better idea probably in the next week or two, how much bedrock there's actually gonna be removed there and what it's made out of. There's good bedrock, I found out, and bad bedrock. The porous material is not good for really anything and ends up typically going to the quarries, because it's either ground up for dust or is used for film materials. The harder materials could be used potentially for shoring and other things, so we can take a look at that, depending what the scientific analysis shows what that bedrock's made of.
I think that'd be a great idea to look at that and use it if we can.
Mr. Marsh?
Mr. President, this certainly has some challenges involved, but certainly some opportunity and would change a big part of the complexity of that area of our extended downtown. What is the value of something like this?
I think our preliminary estimates, and we can confirm that with the representatives of the developer, but it's twenty-three, twenty-four million dollars.
Final question?
No, I'll ask the developer.
Any other questions? I have a few. The first one is, we have an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar loan that we took out for the EDA, which basically user or tax, tax dollars. Roughly seven-hundred thousand in property acquisition when it's all said and done, or more. And then now we have the utility cost, demolition cost, remediation cost, staff cost, legal cost, TIF consultant expenses. Do we know what the mediation, remediation costs are of the dump portion, or not yet?
Mr. President, board members, not yet. I mean, you're dealing with doggy doos, which is currently occupied, and a vacant house, which the preliminary analysis was there's really not that much in there. It's pretty small. I think the remediation costs really are the dump and what that comes back at. We will have an answer on whether, one of the concerns a consultant has is high lead content, because if there's a lot of lead in the waste, you can't take it to your standard dump. It has to go to a special landfill. That will add some costs.
And I guess, you know, I'm looking at it from the dollar standpoint, and on one side, I'm, I'm wondering how much is this gonna, you know, we're gonna pay a lot of these fees back with, with a TIF, and future taxes from the parcel are gonna go to the developer or to repay some of our costs. Will there be any dollars for services to this property?
Mr. President and board members, you'll be seeing those numbers at the July meeting.
Okay.
We'll set the, similar to what we did at Canterbury, there'll be a maximum available based on the developer's information they provided. As Springstead will get you those numbers.
Well, when it's, my understanding is when it's a hundred percent, then there's nothing going into the general fund for, you know, police, fire, streets, these types of services that are gonna serve the area, so.
And, and Mr. President, one of the things we don't have yet is what it's gonna cost to rebuild the street. I mean, there are certain public infrastructure costs. If this project doesn't happen, we're still gonna have to clean up Levy Drive. And the city, since we've owned this property a long time, is kind of on the hook now. TerraCon has had to notify the state that there's a dump here that potentially has some problems. So once the state does their analysis of all the information TerraCon provides, we're gonna be on the hook at some point for having to clean that dump up, even though it's, wasn't caused by us, it's now ours. We're, we're not responsible party responsible for the cleanup.
My other questions are for the app of the developer.
Just, I mentioned that, you know, redevelopment is difficult and expensive. The, we could do nothing. And as we look at this proposal over the next month or so, you know, there are costs there.
Absolutely.
Certainly opportunity, and, and weighing that is correct.
Well, but my goal is to make sure that the rest of the taxpayers don't have to subsidize it. That's the goal. We know that, you know, when you have this many apartment rooms in one location, there are gonna be calls for service. And, you know, the chief of police comes up and says, "Due to the expansion of the population, you know, we want to add an officer," there's a cost to that. And you, you just kind of balance these things out. Presentation from the developer? Welcome and thanks for coming.
Good evening. Dan Hebert with the Gone Companies. Thanks, council members and mayor, for having us here and taking a look at our development. So I'll just ask what question you have from me and try, I try to answer them as, as best I can.
Okay. Questions of the developer? Mr. Marsh?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the value of the, of this proposal, about twenty-three million on, on your side, is that what you said?
Uh, that's, that's correct. And, you know, these, these, these figures were derived before we really knew some potential contamination in the landfill alike, so this is what kind of our basic pro forma would, would offer for about twenty-three million dollar project, based on one-hundred-and-twenty-five units of market rate, you know, amenity-rich type apartment living.
Follow-up?
Mr. Marsh?
Um, how many total square feet is this?
Good question. You know, we've been dealing more or less in, in concept and not schematic design. At this point, you know, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet, probably something like that, with parking garage included.
I know we have some bigger buildings down there, obviously, that I'm trying to get scale and scope for.
Right.
Any questions of the developer? I have a couple, and I'll come back to you, Ms. Marsh. I was looking at some of the mapping that our staff put up, and a couple of questions that came up. One is, do, does the, do you propose onsite management of this facility?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Security, entrance-type pass or whatever?
Yeah, secured entrance, surveillance, cameras.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, and this might be an engineering question more so. Mr. Kurski, can we get the map put up that showed the entrance on Scott Street to the parking area? And it's probably not to, to a good scale for me, but the distance from the corner on First Avenue to that driveway seems close to me, but I can't tell what the actual footage is.
Sure. So, and so I, I have John Harris here from, who's the architect on the project, so whatever I can answer, he can answer too. So are you referring to, because, so the garage entrance is on Levy for the underground parking, and then Scott Street is gonna be your surface parking entrance?
Right, right.
And so that's your question specifically for?
Scott Street, yeah. It just seems closer to the corner than the one on Levy, and I, First Avenue gets fairly busy at times. So there might be a, a right-in and a right-in to the garage stacking concern that I might have on Scott Street going north, coming off First.
Good evening. My name is John Harris with Harris Associates and the architect for the project. That was a concern, and we actually moved it down to the south a little bit. The topography of the land is really kind of dictating that at this point, in that we need to enter up higher in order to get, we're, we're coming down here in the garage entry from the north going in underground. So up here, the further we move down Scott Street, the less likely, the, it's more difficult to access that second level parking. But I do share your concern with the stacking, and that's something we brought up with the planners early on. And I guess the feedback we got was, they didn't think it was a problem, but if we want to try to move it south, we're certainly willing to try to do that, as long as we can make the grades work.
North, north.
Sorry, north.
Yeah, 'cause you're, you're saying south, and to me, that makes the problem worse.
That's worse. No, I know. I'm sorry. I misspoke. We want to move it north as far as we can in order to still be able to make that, that grade.
It may not need to be moved. I just can't really tell on this drawing what the distance is, or is that distance?
I'm gonna say it's probably about sixty-five to seventy feet.
You're not done with your final calculations and see how far north you could move that?
No, we're not. We're not. You know, we, we don't have our, our civil engineer on board. We're really in a schematic, almost a pre-design stage at this point. I think it probably looks a lot more developed than it really is.
No, I'm sorry, man. Go ahead.
That's the two questions that I had for the developer, so.
Okay, I just, I, you know, I concur with this, you know, the entrance to that parking lot, but I, I also know that this lot grades, grades lower to the north. So this building, as much as we think about height, actually at its highest point is, is set down below sixty-nine or one-on-one here in front, right?
Correct.
So it'll actually give a, it'll fit into the land better than just standing up at a, at a higher point.
Absolutely. And, and that was important for us. You know, I mean, there, there is an existing precedent. I can kind of go through here. There's an existing precedent for the buildings that are on Levy Drive, and we certainly didn't wanna dominate that or create anything that was overly tall. We made the conscious effort to keep the count down a little bit to bring the height of the building down just some. I can go over sort of, if you want me to go over in detail the plans, I'm certainly willing to do that and kinda give you our thought process about how we went through the design. It's up to you. I'm glad to do that.
I don't have a need to go into great detail unless the body wants to.
Probably not. My, Mr. President, my questions are, I have followed probably three of your organization's apartments here over the last several years. And one of them that comes to mind is mentioned in our pack at the Lighthouse in Forest Lake. That's up and running. How's your vacancy rate? What type of challenges have you had with that one?
So, that, that opens July first.
Okay.
Thereabouts. The pre-leasing's gone very well. We're, we're, I, we're delivering a product to the market that's not there right now, that, that's what people are seeking right now. And so, um, but, but it was a definitely partnership, the same type of partnership that we're looking, Shakopee that we have with Forest Lake. And, uh, it's become a win-win for everyone because it is bringing about two hundred rooftops downtown, and it's interesting because we track where people are coming from. And overwhelmingly, we're just not recycling renters from around town to this, people are selling their home, people are coming out, out of Forest Lake counterintuitively, moving to Forest Lake, quality of life, both on a lifestyle of living, but to be by sometimes their kids, families, retirees, their millennials. We have a Players, which is a big employer around, just to the north. We've, and Fairview Clinic too is a big employer that has thanked us for coming to town and just delivering a, a product like this. So, I'm very excited to work with the EDA and council to move this project forward.
Follow-up?
Sure.
You've done some market analysis of opportunity of rents here in our, in Shakopee or the southwest area. You're aware we have some other apartment, market rate apartment buildings already in the ground and being built that should be finished as well later this summer in phase ones of, of one. A lot of units coming on the market here. Is that a concern of yours? Do you think the market can handle that?
Sure. So looking at the, just the county study and talking to Maxfield Research, we do quite a bit of work with them on our, on our other projects around the metro. You know, they're, they're pretty optimistic about the market. You know, there's some things going on, which is not as many single-family homes are being built to town, townhomes condos aren't being built by developers, and so this is kind of the, the substitute, if you will, what people are choosing to live in is, is amenity, amenity-rich apartments.
Go ahead.
To follow up on that, I think with the River View, I think you'll have quite a bit of draw, just for the view. Uh, one thing I'd like to ask, if the body accepts it, is I know there's at least one neighbor in the crowd tonight, and maybe more. I'd like to get some feedback from them, if that's possible.
Okay.
Barb, you wanna come up and?
Hang on, let's, let's, let's see if there's, make sure we're done with questions from the developer first.
Sure.
Okay. Is there any other questions that we have for the developer? Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
All right, there's somebody in the audience that's in the area that'd like to comment on this proposal?
I'm Barb Curry. I am one of the neighbors. I live in that area that won't be built. I guess I'm glad to see road improvement happening because that's been needed for a long time. Learning about the bedrock, the scope of the project and the road construction, I'm kind of concerned about the noise level and the access to my home in that time. I think it's positive to use the river. I mean, we had the other project that didn't go through, but to take advantage of the river area is good. I don't know the numbers they've been looking at, but it seems like we have so much growth and job growth in the area that we can use more apartments. It looks like it's gonna be five stories high. So that perhaps will affect the western sun, but I would vote for a project that provides that much housing. And the people that live there are going to be spending in the city too. So, I guess I'd like to know some more individual things about it, but you're not really at that point, so table that for later.
Well, thanks for your input.
Yep, the building is fifty-six feet high and, and it's consistent with the two buildings to the east, roughly in height.
Looks like we have another neighbor.
Yep. Come on up, welcome and share your thoughts.
William Strunk, three oh three, First Avenue. My eighteen-seventy-two house does not like to be shaken, okay?
Can you speak into the mic?
My eighteen-seventy-two house does not like to be shaken, and if they're gonna be doing a lot of blasting and bedrock, I would, you know, I'm all for development, but, uh, you know, we have to pay for what we damage, correct?
Where's your house located?
Right on the corner.
Okay.
So, I put up with the construction at RAR, with the dust and the dirt and debris, and now it's just gonna get closer. So, if this developer wants my vote, I'm thinking, you know, you're gonna have to do some remediation on my house and a paint job after this is done.
Or take?
And then I'd probably say, okay.
Or take steps to make sure there's no damage to your property.
Well, the, the whole dust factor alone is just gonna kill me, okay? That's, if you've lived next to a construction site, and I've been in, in the construction field, and with the amount of traffic, we've already increased at that end of town. You know, we had a shooting down there, you know, at the end of my driveway. You know, we got people coming and going. My security factor is a big concern, okay? So if I wanna put up a twelve-foot fence, I sure hope you'd, you know, allow me to do so. But, uh, you know, I'm all for development. I'm gonna lose my view of the river, 'cause I do have a view from my second story. And that's one thing I do cherish. But, uh, we just need to make sure we do it right, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for your input.
Anybody else? This was an informational item, so there's no action being requested. Appreciate the presentation from staff and the developer. All right, where are we? Four, four B was removed. Four C. Officer, office, offer for Opus Development sixty-nine and Veerling. Mr. Kurski.
Mr. President? Mr. President, board members, Opus Development has approached the city about acquiring its remaining property at the sixty-nine Veerling site. So they have a long history in the region, starting back in the nineteen-fifties. They're considered one of the top ten developers in the state of Minnesota. They've, they've already developed a number of projects in Shakopee, including AmerisourceBergen. They purchased the former ADC headquarters for the redevelopment into Emerson, and they've also developed two adjacent industrial buildings. Again, I said they approached the city about a possible development. This is their initial concept plan. This is probably the third or fourth revision, but two buildings with probably two to three tenants each that would have probably light manufacturing, distribution out of the backside of it, so decent quality jobs. They've had a lot of interest from companies looking to move into Shakopee right now. We do not have any more of this space currently available in the marketplace. And Opus is willing to build this on spec based on their feeling that the market's pretty strong. This has good access to one sixty-nine. There's a lot of growth going on. They can draw from Shakopee and also Chaska for workers and companies interested in this area. So, they're, based on this design you just saw, they're offering a purchase price of a million six fifty. A development, speculative development of two buildings, one of about seventy-six thousand square feet, one of about a hundred and eight thousand square feet. Warehousing, which we're concerned about, there's a lot of warehousing already in the community, would only be incidental to a business that would locate here, so they would have their own product they would be shipping out. They've also agreed to a higher level of design that's currently required by the code, landscaping buffers along Veerling. They've asked the city would modify the one detention basin into two. The city would make some small modifications to the roadway and the roundabout, and the city would retain Outlet A. If you remember, Outlet A is where the Gopher State truck was. The corner of that lot still is contaminated and will probably be contaminated for a long time. They do not wanna put that into their larger project when they finance it. And they're, they are here tonight and will be happy to answer questions.
I'm gonna ask the, the question, Mr. Thompson, on this page here. Do you have this? This paragraph four confidentiality.
Mr. Chair, members of EDA, I've talked to Mr. Kurski about that today. That's, that's gonna have to come out of the agreement. It's, it's not confidential.
I can talk about what's on here?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, if this were to move forward, the outlot you're saying we would retain, but it's part of the contamination, and if we don't top it, then it's natural, and is that gonna pose a bigger problem?
Mr. President and members, we, we would probably do some additional landscaping on that and probably some signage for the overall area and just basically leave it alone.
The, uh, the memo says one point seven five, and your presentation said one point six.
Mr. President and members, that was, the original concept had actually larger buildings, and meeting with engineering and with the planning staff, they agreed the buildings probably needed to be smaller, and so they're basing their cost on amount of square footage they could build on the site. So they've had to shrink the buildings down to actually make them work better on the site. So we had some major heartburn over some original design work they had at this intersection. They've now reworked their back parking lot and brought it down to here. That's where we lost a hundred thousand dollars. So they had a much larger building originally.
Okay, we're selling a, a raw piece of land. I'm not sure I understand how the building they put on it changes the raw land.
Mr. President and board members, it's based on economics, so you can only build so much square footage, they can only rent it for so much money. If they build less square footage, it drives down the cost that they can pay for the land. It's no different than in a subdivision, if you could build ten houses and we say, well, actually only six will fit, the price of the land goes down.
Okay.
I'm sure they'd be happy to address that.
And then there's items in here, well, I'll hold my questions to the end.
So, so this is only informational to get some direction. Because we are starting construction on this project, we, if there's no interest in the EDA board to move this forward, we can all walk away and we'll just continue. If there is, they're prepared to move forward, bring back to you, as you know, we would have a purchase agreement, it has to be publicly notified, and then they would go into additional design work, so this is again informational to try and get ahead of bringing things that are done before you.
Mr. Whiting, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, looks like in concept, the center between the two buildings would be for their truck loading zones.
That's correct.
With our designing of this roadway and the roundabout, is that a concern with running truck traffic through there?
I, I think the goal when they did this was to separate out the truck traffic from sort of the vehicular traffic, so their parking lots, basically they separated that, so they're not interfering in the trucks for deliveries.
I guess my question is more about our road we're building in there.
Running the trucks through the roundabout.
The roundabout was designed to handle our largest piece of fire equipment. It can handle the tractor trailers. If we had our druthers and we knew this was gonna come forward, would we have designed the road slightly differently? Yes, but we are where we are today and we can make it work.
Okay. Mr. Mars?
And, uh, Mr. President, in the memo, you made it very clear, these are not gonna be warehouses at all. These will be manufacturers, and the warehouse aspect will be auxiliary to any building, right?
Mr. President, board members, yes. I mean, they built a similar building. They've agreed to kinda up the design. I mean, right now we allow painted precast. They've agreed not to do painted precast here. But the building they built across from Emerson has some pretty interesting companies. One of them is a major manufacturer of components that get shipped all over the US and the world, and so they have welding going on inside, high-paying jobs. Another company is, one of the major companies that services ice skating, ice rink equipment and design for that, and so they're located. That's the kind of tenants we want. They've had very, very preliminary discussions with some tenants that are not in our market in other fields that have looked at Shakopee, but we've just not had the space that they're out talking to right now.
Mr. Kurski, there's some items in this, um, memo that talks about waiving of fees and waiving of various codes and stuff like that, and...
Again, Mr. President, that's just an offer letter we put in there so you'd know. I think that they at least were somewhat serious. Again, we would do our own purchase agreement with our council, working with them. This is just a letter they sent to us. It's nothing to, that we're asking for your signature approval on tonight. It was just for informational purposes. There's a lot of work to move ahead, but before they go and spend a lot of money, we make some modifications. We wanted to make sure that we're on the right page, or we would stop.
I'm, I'm looking at, I'll get right to you. I'm looking at sixty-three plus docks. So I guess one question that comes up is how many daily semi-trips are gonna be coming and going?
And again, Mr. President, we don't know who the tenants are yet, but I can tell you the facility that's out by Emerson, it's not a lot, 'cause we drove out and looked at that building and it's a few trucks a week. They just need that space for them to be able to maneuver. It doesn't mean it's gonna be full of trucks. That company basically ships their manufactured goods out, gets raw materials in. The ice company ships out basically ice, ice rink equipment that they're manufacturing. I don't think we're gonna see heavy trucks, but it allows UPS, FedEx to stay out of the worker parking lots. But again, they're here and they could, they have these all over the Midwest and they'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, a year ago, this area here under city control was raw land. Today, we've relocated a business here. We're getting a new business, and now this site, if they sort of move forward with a high-end developer of Opus is, uh, is amazing in a short period of time. My concern is, though, that when we talked about this, this end of town and being the gateway on one, on sixty-nine, uh, we talked about up the side of the hill is gonna get improved, one oh one, so this, you know, sixty-nine is always designed to be more busier than it is. And so I feel that these, this site here is kind of a gateway into our community, and we want something that says hello and welcome and building materials, et cetera. Is that gonna be up, uh, on the higher end?
Mr. President, board members, that's one of the discussions we've had, had with Opus, and I think one of the reasons why they don't wanna budget on the price is that we're gonna require them to do, I think, even a better quality building than you're seeing in the Valley Green Industrial Park, because it is a gateway, and we're spending a lot of money on infrastructure and landscaping here. They've agreed that truck dock, you can see on the diagram here, they're buffering it with some more landscaping so that it does not become kind of the focal point. And if you've seen any of their buildings in the Twin Cities, on the corners and down the front, they tend to be pretty heavy glass, 'cause that's where the front of office is, so they have conference rooms, sales offices, president of the company, research, all of that would be on the front, and that was our goal here to get some good architecture facing that entranceway.
Any other questions? Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I just see that we're, you know, we're gonna add more jobs to our city, which, you know, we, we've got jobs, we don't have housing. You know, we're, with the previous presentation, we're adding housing, but it, it's just, uh, feeding the beast. We're going back and forth here. We're adding jobs, we gotta add housing. We add jobs, we gotta add housing. I calculated it down here. This is a little over a hundred and four thousand an acre, if I'm not mistaken. And that's fairly low for what's going on for raw land, isn't it?
I think we've seen raw land, the top of the market here is probably about a hundred and fifty thousand. This is not what I consider the Valley Green Industrial Park, which is kind of the premier location. I think you have to take out, outlet A... I think you have to take out Outlet A, and you have to take out the detention basins, because they're not usable. You have to look at the net usable acreage, and the Opus guys do this, I think, all over the Midwest, they'd be happy to talk numbers. It's their proposal. I think from a housing standpoint, we still own, when this is all said and done, I think this is about four acres that's left over, and we've had a number of people talk to us about doing some apartments there. So the benefit of having people living there, being able to walk across the street, not having to drive to get here.
Go ahead.
Follow up. Four acres, how, what size apartment building could we put on that?
Probably a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five units.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Mokel.
Is there going to be any, we talked about the road a little bit, but is there going to be any guarantees that we're not going to be having truck traffic going from the Hy-Vee up Veerling?
I think we will work from a design standpoint to get the trucks to turn left out of here. It's not a pleasant trip up that road, so I don't think that they would want to do it.
Which is more residential, that's why I was curious.
How far are we on that roundabout, or are we committed to that?
Mr. President, board members, yes, you approved the contract. I think the last meeting, the contractor's underway, they're doing the construction work right now.
Mr. Lewis.
Is it possible to make that road for trucks only, or one-way use for trucks only? Not, you know, regular cars and vehicles can go both ways, but anything coming out of there has to do a left out to go to sixty-nine and then reach 169? Instead of like Ms. Mokel was saying, to go the other way towards Hy-Vee, that's a very congested intersection.
I think I'll leave that question to the city engineer.
Mayor and council members, good question. Typically, in Shakopee, we don't have too many restricted truck routes. It's difficult to enforce, it's pretty limiting. We could look at it. I think the concerns are these trucks from this site going east on Veerling, that is something we can certainly work with the property owner and have them work with their truck drivers to use the county road rather than the city streets. But signing can be difficult, and it can be limiting, but it is something that we could look at in the future.
Go ahead.
Well, and I think, you know, once the drivers make a couple, they make one trip to the east, they're not going to go back to the east. They're going to go out to sixty-nine and run sixty-nine. So I'm hoping that, you know, we don't have to worry about that, but we're going to have the occasional truck that's going to go down there, and, you know, I just would hope that we could limit that, because it is, it is high-traffic area and a lot of kids.
Any other questions? My biggest concern at this point, I think, is the roundabout, and without, again, this is not really to scale, it's real small on the page, I can't really tell how wide it is, so I guess I don't have an informed opinion, other than to say that it just seems difficult for semis, but I don't know that, so, yeah. Go ahead.
Mayor and council members, that roundabout is designed for the trucks that would be used in that loading dock. It's designed for our fire truck, as well as to ensure that there's proper movements for the trucks, so it will be adequate.
Okay. Mr. Whiting.
Just a comment, you know, I think as long as we're talking about the higher-end building materials, we're talking about buffering, there's not a lot of space that is going to create so much manufacturing that truck and truck, you know, hundreds of trucks are going to be coming out of there, hard to say. But to me, it sounds like a good concept. I would have liked to see Outlet A as the parking lot and sealed off, but understandably, they don't want to be buying into that kind of mess either, so I think in concept, it could have been something higher and better use. I guess it could have been, but I think this is a good project, and I think we need to see what comes out of it, and we're not looking at any kind of final plans here either.
Right. Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, that Outlet A, you know, it's like, it's been mentioned, that's kind of the gateway to our community in some respects. I think we should look at what we can do with that to make it look a little better, you know, so that it's more presentable to people coming in for the first time, you know, give them a good, you know, first view of Shakopee.
I would suspect at some point that that would be a location for some kind of a monument sign.
Well, it's already on, a business park sign is...
Well, I mean, like a...
Closer to sixty-nine.
Yeah, up in here.
Yeah.
Mr. President, board members, we'll, again, this is just a concept plan, we'll look at moving that line a little bit further north if we can. The contamination really is just at that corner, and making sure that it gets properly landscaped, and there's a proper monument for that area. But the Opus people are here and would be happy to answer specific questions.
Welcome, and thanks for coming.
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. Joe Mahoney with Opus Development. I have a team with me as well, Phil Katnau with Opus Development, and Joe Owen with Colliers. He would be the broker on this project, so we're happy to answer any questions. Might touch on a couple items that we're discussing.
How do we get the display back up on our screens? There you go. Thank you, you did it. Go ahead.
In terms of the purchase price, I think that whole site is the fourteen point four seven acre. We've had a little flexing with the score of the ponds, I think it's probably closer to a hundred and forty thousand an acre. The ponds are allocated between the road, the other developments to kind of the northwest as well as our site, so it's, I guess you have to look at it a little bit in aggregate as well. In terms of the use and how much truck traffic, I know Michael did state that we don't know it is a speculative development. The reason we do speculative development in industrial is the speed to market. A lot of these users, they don't really have time to wait for a developer to go through the entitlement process and get a building out. A lot of times, they need space, you know, next month, or three months, or six months, especially these smaller users. So that's one of the reasons why, you know, we do speculative projects. We successfully completed the Valley Park Business Center, as Michael alluded to. We're very happy with the project and working with the city of Shakopee, and we're excited about the market. I think we've seen a lot of bulk warehouse development, but there's really a lack of this type of product here in the marketplace today. So with that, happy to answer any questions for you.
So you didn't answer what you're expecting for truck traffic?
Being a speculative development, we don't know who the end user is going to be.
Can you give us a range, from here to here?
You know, Joe, I might look to you a little bit. Do you know, in terms of the truck traffic for users of this size, say, three to six users on a site like this, I mean, some, I mean, some users might have two or three trucks coming in a day, and some might have ten to twenty. I mean, it's really hard to anticipate what that number might be without identifying what the user is.
It's definitely very market-driven, and if we're chasing these manufacturing, assembly-type companies, it's just tough to tell. Oftentimes, some of these truck carts, we often glass in the dock doors, because they want more natural light coming in, and they may not have a lot of truck distribution. As Joe alluded to, Shakopee does have a lot of bulk, and we see an opportunity here for more light manufacturing and to meet some of those other prospects and tenants in the market. We've seen a lot of deals come from the Bloomington Savage markets recently into Shakopee. I've been involved in a number of those deals, and so we do think there's a real opportunity here.
Questions? Mr. Mars.
Again, these are not spec warehouse buildings, is that correct?
It would be, I'll call it a spec industrial building, similar to, I think, the tenants like we saw in Valley Park Three, whereas a lower clear height of twenty-four to twenty-eight foot clear building, a lot of manufacturing, you know, Fountain Industries, Becker, or even maybe a med tech type company. There's going to be ancillary, obviously, warehousing space within these, you know, that the tenants are going to have to sort their product as they're working on it, but it's not, it's not intended to be a bulk distribution building.
Any other questions? What's the wishes of the body?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Whiting.
I believe this is just looking for direction from staff.
Yep, what's the direction?
So I guess, I think we've had our questions answered. In my opinion, I can see this as a good concept. It's hard to tell until you get final plans and until you get actually that final customer.
Further into it?
I think, I think this is along the lines of what we're looking for in this area, so I would be in favor of it.
Mr. Mars.
Mr. President, I think this does check a lot of boxes. I know we've had some residential developers look at this area, but I stand back and look at where we were a year ago to where this is, and Opus is a premier developer in the metro area, they've already been in our community, very successful. You know, I asked the question twice, these are not warehouse-type distribution facilities, or light manufacturing and office, and if we can get some higher-end jobs, this is an important gateway to our community and revitalizing this area that might continue and stretch to the mall. I think it does a lot of things for our community, so I'd like to see this move forward, and then we would see more detail as it comes forward.
Ms. Mokel.
I, too, am very excited to see this development move forward. You know, we had ideas of what we wanted this property to look like, and I think it checks some of the boxes. Of course, you know, you've heard our comments about higher-end facades and the traffic, and those would be my two major concerns.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, I remember when they came forward before with the possibility of some housing in this area. I was a little more interested in something like that, but this doesn't, it's not the worst fit, because right across the sixty-nine from there is light industrial also, so it ties in somewhat. So I don't have any major problems with it.
Well, I'm going to tend to agree with Counselor Mokel, because the original, originally, we wanted to put this area into a office, office park, corporate headquarters type setting, and, you know, that's not quite what we're getting, but I think if the outside appearance of the building facade is to a level, you know, I think that's going to be critical. So I agree with Ms. Mokel on that, and I also have the concerns with traffic, but our engineers telling me it's designed for trucks, so we'll see, we'll see how that works out, so. I think you have enough direction at this point.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here today, and your presentation. Item number four D.
So, Mr. President and board members, this is just informational for you, so we have received an application for TIF out in the Southbridge area. It's a very unusual TIF. It's basically for a TIF that's rarely used, there have not been that many done in the state of Minnesota, so we're all getting up to speed on how they're done, but it's a twenty-year TIF by statute to pay for the remediation of basically old dumps and contaminated ground. So they have provided us with preliminary engineering reports that we've sent off to our consultants who are taking a look at them, but that the site cannot bear even the weight of a single-story restaurant. So the applicant is proposing that we bring back to you a full-blown proposal for TIF to remediate that site. By state statute, they have to spend two dollars a square foot on remediation. The costs there right now are somewhere between eight or nine hundred thousand and three million. I think through the process, we will solidify what the real cost is going to be, but it's a pretty contaminated site.
I got to say, does it surprise you that a state law would require you to spend so much money? It doesn't make any sense.
Mr. President, I think...
Remind me to work on that state law with our state leaders, because they...
The requirement is so that these are not abused, and that sites truly are contaminated, so that's why the two-dollar square foot threshold was set by the legislature.
Well, I'm saying there should be an incentive to spend less. Mr. Whiting.
Well, here we have a site that's been in the works and being developed for quite some time. We've got a new movie theater that's not pictured in this picture that we're looking at here, and now we have the site right in the middle. So we had talked, we actually had planned, and I think we had approved the Willie McCoy site out here.
And they did submit their building permit for that site.
Yeah, so they're already on the way, and then they find out that it needs all this work. We have a lot of potential tax revenues that could be happening in here. It's unfortunate that we've, now, and just tonight, we've run into two dump sites that at least we didn't know about, so I guess it's something we need to move forward.
Ms. Mokel.
I too, it's, to me, it's not surprising to find the dump site, because there was a lot of farmers that did those types of things, rather than pay for trash, and unfortunately, now it's on a restaurant that everybody's been waiting for, by the way, Mr. Salto. And I think it's just one of those things that it just, for me, it kind of has to happen so that we can get the development going in that area.
Mr. Mars.
Mr. President, I find this, another dump in Shakopee, I think I can count five, Huber Park, we just went through the apartment, all of this. You know, this original land from the Shakopee Five Hundred is, you know, very old, and Shakopee Crossings Limited purchased it back a long time ago, and all these sites have been graded out for years, twenty years. I find it highly unusual that all of a sudden, we've seen development, and there hasn't been a dirty dirt issue until now. I know this body went and we joined the livable communities opportunity for the Met Council. There are some grant money that could be available through their brownfield. That's actually one of the reasons that I voted for the Met Council Livable Communities to be able to now try to get some of that money back through a brownfield. Is that an opportunity on this site?
Mr. President, board members, we're not eligible until next year. They've already spent this year's money, or allocated this year's money, and they have some pretty specificity on what's a brownfield. This is basically garbage, it's not real true contamination. I mean, it's similar to what you saw in the downtown, it's a big hole that, over, farmers, whomever dumped whatever junk they had into it. We have the same issue behind Rar, where there's washing machines and old dryers thrown in there, because it was just an open hole. I think the benefit of this site is it is between the Home Depot and the movie theater, and it's, I think, problematic for both of those users, because it's just a big empty field with no connectivity. I think if we can get the site remediated and get it developed into kind of more of a village flavor with restaurants and activities that join those two uses, it's going to help the whole area. I think it's hurting the entire project right now.
With the follow-up question, Mr. President, so the red is larger than the Willie McCoy site, is that the remediation, going to look at this entire property? Is that where the number three million comes up is a lot higher than I heard nine months ago?
Mr. President, board members, yeah. I mean, I think Intertech Braun's done a pretty exhaustive investigation of the site for the developer, they've talked to the state, and I think they've all agreed, there's a lot of contamination on the site, and the question is, how much of it's got to come out to make the project feasible? And I think that that's kind of the next phase we're in right now, and we will work with our consultants on the numbers and work with the developer on what that final number needs to be to make it feasible.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, I look at this project, and I'm going, you know, if this sits there too long, the developer is going to pull out, the landowner is going to stop paying taxes on it, it's going to go back in the tax foreclosure to the county, and it's going to sit there forever, because nobody's going to put the money into it to clean this up and develop it. I think, Mr. Chairman, you might have been mistaken on the two dollars a square foot that needs to be spent. The developer has to spend at least two dollars a square foot. It's not, everybody has, they have to put that much skin in the game of their own money.
Is that what the statute requires?
Mr. President, so, again, we're just digging into this, because it's rarely used. The initial consultant read is they would have to spend about eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars. This would be a pay-as-you-go note, so all that money, they'd have to spend upfront, and then they'd be reimbursed over twenty years.
Just as a follow-up, I see this as, we either do it, or we get a vacant lot forever.
Well, I'm going to keep it quiet under my hat of where the big dump was in town when I was a child.
You know where they all are. Mr. President, what's the next step here?
Well, there's no, I actually requested it. Well, there's no, I actually requested it this time.
Mr. Mr. President, Board members, what we're trying to do is bring stuff early to you so you know about it so that we can start working on it. And we're spending consultant money. He did put down the required deposits. So, we have engaged Springsteen, Springsteen and Kennedy and Graveney. As again, these are not very common in the state, so we're having to work through, looking at other ones to make sure that we're in full compliance with the state. And the developer is well aware this is very complicated.
And I, Mr. Kurski, I think it's, it's fair to point out to everybody that like the Brownsfield dollars is more geared toward, you know, like 3M chemical seepage into the ground or oil refinery for 100 years where it's, over years have been seeping down into the ground.
Toxic chemicals is-
Yeah, and it's more of that type of contamination compared to everyday past garbage, you know?
Well, this would be cheaper.
Well, we sure hope so. It should be cheaper, absolutely.
It should be.
Yep.
I think we should have a workshop and get some shovels out there as a council or the EDA. It's being the EDA project.
We'll use the big ones, the big backhoes.
Not the golden ones, no.
Any other reports, Mr. Kurski?
Ms. Mokel?
Making motion to adjourn to Tuesday, July 3rd at 2018 at 7:00 PM.
Mr. Mars?
I'll take him out.
Motion by Mokel, second by Mars. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
We will reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for June 5th, 2018. Look at that. Uh, Council Mokel?
I would like to request a recess.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for a short recess. Uh, no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. We'll stand and recess.
... Actually, we've got a Sharpie.
We'll reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for June 5th, 2018. Coming out of break here, we are at 9:01. The 2017 Annual Financial Report Audit. Darren?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Before each night is the, the Annual Financial Report, or the CAFER, we like to call it. We do have Andy Berg from Abdul Iken Myers, a partner with, with that firm here tonight. If you do recall, we did switch up auditors this year. We went over RFP last year after we'd been with our previous auditors for many, many years. And we just thought it was a good opportunity for us to get a fresh set of eyes out there. So, it was kinda that first year of going through with new auditors, and so it's always a little bit of a learning curve for both them and us on that end of it. When audit itself went really well, we were, you know, worked really well with the auditors and such. And I look forward to the upcoming years on that end of it. Mr. Berg does have a presentation for tonight, kinda going over some of the financials and going over some of the other key measures and such like that throughout the year as well, too. So, I'll turn it over to him unless you have any questions for me, so.
No, I think we're good. Andy, welcome.
All right, thank you very much. I have a presentation together. All the information here is also in the, the management letter that we provided to you. Then, result of our audit is that we issued an opinion on your financial statements.
Can you speak into the mic a little bit more, Andy? Just pull it up.
Yeah, our mics are not very good at picking things up. If you can push, pull that forward and, and raise it a little bit. Thank you.
There we go. How's that?
There you go.
All right. So, back to what our responsibility is, is to issue an opinion on your financial statement. We issued unmodified or clean opinion. As part of the audit, we do look at the, the city's internal controls. We do not test the internal controls. We just gain an understanding for audit planning purposes. There is one internal control finding that we reported related to prior period adjustment recording developer-accepted infrastructure. The city did have that prior to us coming out and doing the audit. We didn't discover it. They discovered it on their own. But it's still required to be reported as a finding. With that, we just recommend the city review its processes for accepting the developer-installed infrastructure, and formally approve that by the city council and accept that infrastructure. As part of that, we do also test for seven different areas of Minnesota legal compliance. A clean opinion there, too, so no Minnesota legal compliance issues. On the slide, I also just put the, that the financial statements are management's responsibility. This is right out of our audit opinion letter, so just thought I'd bring that to your attention, as you all know. So, jumping into the, the financial information, starting with the, the general fund. Here's a five-year history of the ending unassigned fund balance in the general fund, or the blue line. And we compare that to the next year's budget, mainly for cash flow purposes with your property taxes coming in halfway through the year being your main revenue source. The city does have a fund balance policy to maintain that at a minimum of 40%, in between 40 and 45%. So, you can see that the five years presented, the city has been in compliance with the fund balance policy. If we look at the, the activity of the general fund during the year, here we give you a summary comparison of final budget amounts to actual amounts. Total revenues came in just over one million higher than budget. The areas with higher variances were licenses and permits and charges for services. Expenditures came in at 23.7 million above budget by about 811,000, mainly in the public works area. You did transfer out 1.8 million to other funds where you had budgeted 700,000. So, you transferred out 1.1 million more than originally anticipated. So, total fund balance increased up to one point, increased 1.2 million up to about 11.9 million. Now, here's a, a graph that looks at the revenues in the general fund by source over three-year periods. You can see fairly consistent. The one item to point out is the blue line at the top there. That's your property taxes, which makes up about 63% of the revenues. And again, like I mentioned, consistent over the three years presented. This is a three-year comparison of the general fund expenditures by program. Looking at the, the red line there, public safety being the highest area spent at 43.2%. Slightly increasing over the, the three years presented. The next area is culture and recreation, which makes up 28.3%. That's the purple line with X, and again, seeing a, a increase there. So, the increase we're seeing in expenditures correlates favorably with the increase in budget. We saw comparing that to the ending unassigned fund balance. Now, moving on to some of the other cities' funds, you do have a, a number of special revenue funds. So, five of them reported here. What we give you here is a comparison of the ending 2017 fund balance compared to 2016. So, in total, you have at the end of the year about 801,000, which was a decrease of 1.2 million. So, mainly in the EDA fund, which decreased 1.15 million related to the downtown redevelopment project. And then you do have a number of internal service funds. Here, we show you any comparison of the total net position compared to 2017 to 2016. 42.5 million compared to about 44.6 million, so a decrease of 2.1 million, mainly due to the city hall construction in the, the building fund. You'll see that fund decrease about 3.4 million. Of the 42.4 million ending net position, the majority of that is invested in capital assets, which makes up about 33 million. The remaining amount unrestricted is about 9.5 million. You do have a number of capital project funds with total ending fund balance of 5.4 million, which was about an $8.7 million decrease from 2016. One I, one item to point out here is there are three funds with deficit fund balances, which were planned by the city. So, there, we just recommend the city continue to, to monitor the plan so that those deficits are originally, are eventually eliminated. Now, looking at that 5.4 million, that's made up of different classifications of fund balance. About 18% of that is restricted for specific purposes, such as your TIF districts. And then about 82% is internally assigned for different projects by the city. Now, you do have a number of debt service funds. In the governmental funds, you have about 34.3 million of bonds outstanding at the, the end of the year. The majority of that is from your 2016 A-bonds, which have ending balance of 29.5 million. We do give you a graph with the next 10 years debt service requirements. The blue portion represents principal, the red interest. There, we just recommend that the annually, the city does evaluate its sources to ensure that it'll meet its debt service requirements. Now, the next set of funds are your, your enterprise funds. First, looking at your sewer fund. With the, the first graph here, we give you a four-year history of the, the cash flows from operations. So, the blue is your cash generated from operations. The gray is the, the cash disbursements from operations. So, you can see it's about break-even in 2017. You did have cash used from operations in 2016, and then about break-even in 2015. 2014 did use some cash from operations. If we look at the cash balance in the sewer fund, you'll see that the, the trend there has been decreasing. The main reasons for the decrease in 2015, 2016, and 2017, all are capital expenditures. all are capital expenditures in each of those respective years. You'll see we do also have a minimum target fund balance in there, mainly for cash flow, which makes up about six months of operating costs, plus the next year's debt service, and then 10 percent of the accumulated depreciation. Your storm drainage fund, again, the cash flow from operation graph here. You can see in 2017, you did generate cash from operations with the receipts, the blue being higher than the disbursements. 2016, you did use cash from operations, so the gray there, the disbursements were higher in 2016. If we look at the cash balance in the storm drainage fund over a period of the four years, you can see fairly consistent in 2014 and 2015. A decrease in 2016 down to $13.5 million, mainly due to capital expenditures. And then another decrease in 2017 down to $12.3 million, mainly due to the fund issuing an interfund loan of $1.7 million to other city funds. And then the last item I wanted to cover is some four-year ratios and comparison to some different peer groups. So the blue numbers are the City of Shakopee's. The red peer group ratios are all cities within the state in similar population. And then the green comparable cities group is around 10 cities that the city uses for comparison for other stuff that the city uses for different projects and other metrics. So looking at here, I'll just point out a couple of them. The second one, the debt per capita, there you'll see the jump from 2015 to 2016, from 208 up to 948, mainly due to the community center and ICE Arena bonds that were issued. Again, still the debt per capita significantly below the peer group, both peer groups presented there. And then the other item to point out, the third from the bottom, the capital expenditures per capita, like with issuing the debt in the new city hall that was built. You'll see those numbers jumped in 2016, went down a little bit in 2017 as you were finishing those projects. So the capital expenditures will vary depending on what type of projects you have going on. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have on the management letter or the actual financial statements.
Council members, questions? So, Andy.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Whiting, I'm going to come back over here.
We talked on your first page under the results. I just want to clarify for the general public a little bit about the one finding, the prior period adjustment, and that was the assets of some of the road or the infrastructure that we didn't report to the, as far as an asset. I just want to clarify that for the general public a little bit.
Correct, so that was the developer-installed infrastructure that was put in in previous years. I don't recall how far it went back, but basically recording that asset on your books.
Recording it as an asset.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that actually caused an understatement during that time, right? Counselor Lehman.
The capital expenditure, I'm on that sheet where you compared with peer group ratio and comparable cities groups. The capital expenditure per capita, 2016. You said city hall, but I know that we've done some pretty substantial road projects. Are they included in that also?
So the road projects, the street component of that would be included in there, too. So any buildings and street projects.
Okay, yeah.
If there is a sewer component to that project, that'd be in the sewer fund.
Yep.
In the capital I mentioned there.
Andy, I have a question. In one of your books here, you had a graph of incoming dollars, taxes, and it was a wheel graph of taxes incoming and then fees for services. And I saw on a bar graph that fees for services is moving up. I think, do you think that that's a good thing for a city to have some diversification and, you know, slightly getting away from reliance on taxes and having the charges for services? Do you think that's a benefit?
Yeah, I would say that's a benefit, and I think that's probably a common trend, that cities are looking for other revenue sources other than property taxes to help support the services.
Or looking to not tax the entire population of value versus the, just a user fee? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, just to follow up on Counselor Whiting saying that adjustment that you made, you don't feel that substantial, and that was just a booking error and really was not in a function of raw dollars?
It was not a, well, clarify, the city made it prior to us coming in. It was a non-cash entry, so it was just booking the roads and other infrastructure that a developer would have put in, in a, for example, a housing development, where they're paying for the roads, water, sewer, et cetera.
Other questions of the auditor?
One last question. On page 143 of the thick book, annual report, back in the statistical data 143, this is the page I love the most. It shows all your operating rate, your debt rate, direct, total direct rate, school district, county. Boy, the school district, yikes, huh? Almost doubled. The city's operating rate has dropped substantially, but our debt service rate has increased substantially. So do I add the two to get to the total direct rate? Because that doesn't, is that what I'm doing here?
It has a total direct rate next to the next column.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, so you're looking at that .3522 number? So that would, on the 26.
2016, you've got the operating rate at .26948.
Yep, and that should actually say 2017.
Pardon me?
And that should actually say 2017. There's two 2016 years there.
Right.
So, okay. Yep, so you add the operating rate and the debt service rate together to get to .38.
Yep, and our debt service rate is substantially higher because of the community center.
Correct.
Because portions of the city hall building were funded with other funds. So I would say the bulk of the debt service rate is the community center.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, so when we're looking at this graph here, the 2016 A. Bonds is the bulk of that rate, and that's where you saw that jump from 2016 to 2017.
But that's a good snapshot. And I noticed the two 16s, too. But I figured it out, I just wrote.
I chose 2017 and 2016.
Well, either way, we got two 2016 years in there, so one of them's probably a 2017 taxes payable year, so.
So is the bottom one the latest one?
Correct, that should be for taxes payable 2017, not 2018, so.
Okay.
And Andy probably will qualify this, too, is that the stats section is unaudited, so they don't. Oh, yours says 20, mine says 2016.
So is mine.
So are there different numbers in this book?
But those are the auditor ones, no.
These stat tables are unaudited, like Darren said.
That's funny.
Good numbers, you think a great audit, then, on your first year in the books? Counselor Mokel, I apologize.
My question was going to be not about some of these graphs, but there's always been concerns in the community about purchasing cards. And can you tell me a little bit about how you go through that process of auditing those?
So like I mentioned at the beginning, we don't audit the internal controls. So we look at the controls, and we do a cash disbursement test, and we always try to look at the credit cards or purchasing cards, you know, as part of our random sample, because a lot of times they're not going to be material, but overall, the charges could be, and they may be a higher risk. So we look at the approval process, we look at who has the credit cards, you know, and how it all flows through the finance system.
Okay, thank you.
Just to address that a little bit, I think the presentation that staff made about their internal controls on the purchasing cards left us pretty solidly understanding how that works and how many different people look at those things, too, so.
But I think it's always good to see it from the auditor's perspective.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's where, you know, if we noticed something that we saw as a, where we thought there'd be a higher risk, that could potentially show up as an internal control deficiency that we report. A lot of smaller organizations may not have segregation from the person initiating the transaction to approving it, to reconciling, and that's where we see segregation duties a lot of times. But here, we didn't find that.
Thank you.
Counselor Luce. I know in past years with the other auditor, we kept getting dinged for the one person handling cash instead of two.
Segregation, yep.
And did you have any findings on that? I'm hoping that that's been cleared up since the community center redo and everything else, and.
Yeah, we didn't have that finding, and I don't believe there was any findings last year. That might have been prior to last year.
Last year, it was not a finding.
Yeah, we had that cleaned up the year before, yeah.
It was the prior 15 years, but the cost of fixing that was well above what the actual liability was. It was, you know, somebody comes up to the counter with a $20 bill to buy a one-day pass or something, the change given out, well, to add two more staff members for, you know, $80, $160,000 a year over potential $7.50 missing or something like that was just ridiculous. So the council at that time decided it wasn't a legitimate concern.
But I will say that we found another way to solve that issue.
And that was done a couple, two years, a year ago?
Last year.
Last year.
Other questions of our auditor? Looks like we'll probably see you again next year.
Yep.
Counselor Whiting.
Since there's no indication for any need to have an extended audit, I'll offer a motion to accept the 2017 audit and accompanying report as presented by the audit staff from Abdou Iken Myers. Second.
I have a motion and a second, and before we have discussion, Darren.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I would like to thank city staff as well, because it's a year-long process. It's the auditors that come in for this, you know, short period of time and put together this audit and put together a financial statement. But I'd also like especially to thank Melissa Schlingman, our county manager, that really puts a lot of effort and great work into preparing this CAFER and does a pretty remarkable job with staying up with all the standards that are new to us each and every year. So thank you to her, and kudos to her and the rest of the staff, too. So, thank you.
Counselor Lehman.
Mayor, I was going to thank our staff and this council, to be honest with you, because this portion of our function is probably one of the most important parts of the function. And, you know, we all in our community and here in council have seen what happened with our school district, and it's important that we're on top of these things. Not only do we review, you know, our budgets and set our expectations, but staff is following up on these things, too. And kudos to staff for the job that they do on the financial side. That's pretty important and pretty impressive, to be honest with you.
Counselor Whiting.
I agree with Mr. Lehman, and I would like to extend our, I would like to speak for the council, if I can, extending our thanks to staff and let them know that we appreciate all their work.
Counselor Luce. Yeah, I can speak from a little bit of experience. I used to be married to a person that dealt with the numbers in a large company, and I know it's a year-long deal. Every month, you've got to bring everything into order, and if that doesn't fall into order, you have to make up for it somewhere. And at the end of the year, if you screw up, it shows up, so. Kudos to all the staff. Counselor Mokel.
And I will just add, too, that with the transition between auditors, I know that takes a little extra work during that year-long process, so I appreciate that as well. I'll add that to that.
I have one last question of one of you two. I read, believe it or not, I'm the type of guy that has nothing to do in my life, so I sit and read the whole document. And I read that there's all these upcoming requirements coming. And I guess the question is, where do we get that, not us specifically, but your department, get that information and, because it looks like quite a lot of change is coming in the accounting world?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, a lot of that we get from, actually, Andy and his staff and from other CPA firms within kind of our Minnesota GFOA Association. We have a great association that really helps kind of disperse information that's coming down the pipeline with New Gasbs and that are coming up every year. It seems like there's at least one new one coming through. So we have a lot of different learning avenues that we get that information in, and we look at the ones that are most imminent and make sure that we need to do appropriate steps to get those implemented, and really work with our auditors to make sure that, you know, they're going through and doing several audits a year. Well, we're working on just one audit a year, so it's harder for us as a staff to really, you know, meld that practice or to get into that routine of, you know, what's required here. And so we work pretty closely hand-in-hand with our auditors to make sure that, you know, we have the right templates or we're interpreting the standard, you know, the same way, or in such like that as well.
So I'll ask you, are they good changes for the most part, or is it bureaucracy that doesn't really need to be there? Or no comment?
No comment.
Good answer.
On behalf of the City of Shakopee and the City Council, Andy, thank you and your organization for this year's audit. We'll look forward to next year's.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There is a motion on the table and a second for their discussion. Discussion on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, 982 premise permit for North Star Search and Rescue, and this is tabled and brought back. Lori.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this was tabled at your last meeting. You asked to have some more information from Mari Kao. So Kelsey Foley, who is the Business Operations Director, is here tonight, along with Ross from the Rescue and Search and Rescue for your questions. So I'm going to just turn it over to Kelsey.
Okay. Welcome, and thank you.
Hey.
Ms. Foley.
If you guys have any questions, I don't know if you all read the letter that I wrote. I'm just kind of giving you the background on where I started with hockey and where we kind of ended with hockey.
Questions, Counselor Whiting?
Kelsey, thank you for coming tonight. My question is, there are several organizations in Shakopee. I can mention a few, but I don't think it's necessary. Have you had discussions with any other service organization within the community of Shakopee?
I have. Actually, before we opened, I met with Rotary, Lions. There's a company in Prior Lake called Spiker Insurance. He runs some pull tabs for Prior Lake, but he's kind of how North Star is, put some money back into the community that he's doing it for. Basically, my final meeting was with Shakopee Hockey, and we agreed to these terms, so we went with them. And we were excited for working with them, and they were the only ones willing to do this aggressive bingo that we do at all the other locations. And when I say on opening day, they told us that they weren't going to do the bingo. It was opening day as they're putting the pull tab boxes in. So, moving forward, it was either we come back and it takes 30 days to redo the paperwork, get everything going, have this meeting, get it approved for a different company, or we just get open and work with them, and understandably know that there was caution. So now we're going on a year on Labor Day, and they wouldn't work with us. I met with, revisited Rotary Lions Club. The interest in the bingo just isn't there necessarily with them either. Lions Club does have more interest in Rotary, but doesn't really necessarily have the experience with the bingo. North Star has the experience. They're a company we really, really believe in. We think that it's awesome for the community. They're willing to put the money back into this community. Obviously, moving forward, I don't want the backlash of the community thinking we're not supporting Shakopee. So that's why we're making it very clear that North Star is part of this community. If any of your kids were to go missing, relatives, he's, this is a company that you're going to call to help you find them. So they are a very important part of Shakopee also.
Thank you.
Other questions? You know, by state law, any organization has to spend, what, 10 percent of their profits within the service area? We discussed that the last time. Um, is it unfortunate that, uh, organization, true, local, based here, didn't come forward or get worked out? It sounds, I read your letter twice, I went, uh, that's unfortunate, 'cause you've had some people there, uh, in discussions, and then it just didn't work out.
It's just a huge missed opportunity.
So, that really is unfortunate to our service organizations here in town, rather than Madi Kow itself.
Yep.
Um, the rules, standard rules still apply by state statute, uh, that wouldn't change at all, um, you know, and certainly if, uh, if, uh, Norstar Search and Rescue, we have a couple of donation opportunities coming up with Reverend Ponin, et cetera, that would be very nice, but, uh, Councilor Lewis, you had some questions on this the last time? You wanted...
Oh, I, uh, well, I was just talking to the gentleman from Search and Rescue before the meeting, and I don't remember what he said, but I think he said there were...
Thank you. I think he said in the last three weeks, you had nine call-outs?
Yep, we had nine call-outs. Our last search was, uh, last night, actually, in Sleepy Eye, from Brown County Sheriff's Department, missing seventy-two-year-old that talked suicide for the last week to his family. We had three K nights last night.
Can you speak into the mic? I apologize.
Uh, we were in Brown County last night in Sleepy Eye for a missing seventy-two-year-old that had been talking suicide. He had a lot of mental health issues to his family, he kept telling them for the last week he was gonna jump off a bridge. If you bet in the Sleepy Eye, there's one bridge in the Sleepy Eye, so, uh, they found his vehicle parked in the woods right next to that bridge, and three of our dogs, uh, my tracking dog and two cadaver dogs indicated that his body is in the river, so now they're dragging the river for him, so... But we've had nine, uh, six in Minnesota and three in Wisconsin, we do cover the five state areas, so...
Okay. Councilor Mokel?
Um, Kelsey, I just really appreciate you being here. I think there was some confusion for us, because we were hearing from organizations in town that they wanted to work with you and that you weren't willing to, and so by reading your letter, I think you clarified a lot of what, um, we maybe missed from those conversations, that we weren't hearing from the other side. So we do appreciate having you, 'cause that really clears up what we move forward with. And so with that, I would like to approve resolution R. 2018-064, a resolution of the City of Shakopee approving a premise, premises permit for Norstar Search and Rescue located at Madi Kow, 1244 Canterbury Road.
Do you have a motion? And a second from Councilor Lewis? Discussion, Councilor Lehman?
After reading the information that you provided, and thank you for providing it, but it, just correct me if my observations are right.
Yep.
It seems like it's the bingo issue that really came down to, where a lot of these organizations want the pull tab portion, but they don't wanna be involved in the bingo portion.
Manpower.
And it came down to the pull tabs. Um, a good example is how you guys just had your meeting with auditing all of your money. I don't get any audits from Hockey, I've gotten two since we opened. Since we are a bar op, I'm responsible for the shortages, so if there's a box that goes two hundred dollars missing, I don't know that. If there's a constant box that's always missing with a certain employee working, I don't know that. There's no security for me to know what those shortages are. So I get a check at the end of the month, and on the bottom, it says the shortages. So I just have to go off of what they say. Um, it's just a constant headache trying to get that, and I think that is a bare minimum. I think I deserve to have that, and I don't have an issue with getting that with any of my other pull tab companies. It's monthly, some of them do it by the box, they just email me at each box, so I know, so I know who was, you know, who's responsible for the shortages.
Right, and you have every, every reason to expect that, to be honest with you.
Um, this was tabled, and I know it took an extra two weeks. Um, thank you for being here, thank you for your letter, it offered us more insight.
Thank you for waiting.
Yeah, thanks for waiting. Um, more discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, guys, and I will give Hockey the respect of the thirty-day notice, so I won't just boot 'em out and let 'em get their stuff. I already, um, emailed them and let them know. I wanna do it the right way, but...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, moving on then, great. Um, 9C1 zoning text amendment to R1C, Old Shakopee Residential Zone. Mr. Kurski, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed zoning text amendment to the R1C. Uh, basically, it's this area that's kind of the tan color, it's a pretty large section of, um, older Shakopee. The real big change here is basically changing the name and the purpose statement, so no zoning is changed in the existing R1C, there's no changes being made to any of the standards. We've had a lot of requests from developers that they would like smaller lot subdivisions, you've seen lots of variances, um, this is a way to try and deal with that. So in R1C, for instance, the minimum lot width is fifty foot, the minimum lot depth is a hundred, front setback is thirty, rear setback is thirty, um, maximum density seven point five units per acre. Um, where we have R1B, which is what you more commonly see, we're getting some of the larger lots. Currently permitted uses are single-family, two-family dwellings on lots seventy-foot wide or thirty-five wa- foot wide townhome lots, public buildings, and then you can see the list of conditional uses. So the purpose of this amendment is to allow flexibility in design, reduce setbacks and reduce lot widths in new subdivisions, and allow flexibility in housing types, so single-family homes can be mixed with twin homes or duplexes, but still must meet the density maximum of seven point five units per acre. So here's a good example of typical lot depth of recent developments at a hundred and twenty foot, uh, at the maximum density. So you can see the twin home, um, and then here's another a hundred and forty foot, a hundred and forty-two foot, uh, deep lots matching the city's original plot, shown at the maximum density also. So this will allow some more flexibility, uh, for some of the newer subdivisions that you're seeing. So again, it changes nothing in the existing neighborhood, except the name.
The density would be changed, but it would allow this zone in other areas, right? A little more compact with smaller...
Mayor and Council, yes. So this basically is creating another zone, doesn't exist anywhere right now, except in the downtown. It's another option for, um, developers to look at to allow them some flexibility. We've been seeing more and more of these subdivisions come in where they're asking for side yard setbacks or rear yard setbacks. This basically establishes a new, it can be used outside of the existing one.
Questions of staff? Councilor Lehman?
First question, um, under the existing R1C, it says, where public sanitary sewer and water are available, under the proposed, it does not have that in there.
It's because, uh, Mayor and Council, so that existing R1C is an existing neighborhood, so there's sewer and water available, and new subdivisions, the developer would be putting that in, so you'd have to have sewer water being put in.
Okay.
So it wouldn't necessarily be available, because you'd be as a new subdivision putting it in.
Okay, but what we're, what you're proposing to change is also gonna overlay over existing.
Correct, all, so in the existing, uh, R1C neighborhood today, everyone has sewer and water, it's on all the streets.
Not on everybody.
The, the one lot that we had, I, I think is being fixed, so...
We missed it, one.
We missed one, went, went back in the eighteen hundreds.
And then the, the other question, two other questions, is the side yard setbacks between R1B and R1C? The R1B is a larger side yard setback, and what exactly are you proposing in the new, uh, what are you calling it, traditional?
Traditional neighborhood development, it could be five, three, seven, so it's gotta be a total of ten, so you could have five feet on both, you could have three feet on one, seven foot on the other.
Okay.
If you do the three foot, there are building code requirements, we have to make, those two sides of the house would have to be made of non-combustible material.
Can I, and, Councilor Lehman, can I just, we had some problems with some very narrow side yard setbacks in the past where some porches weren't allowed, and we had to make some tweaks because of the side yard. How do we work with that? And that's why I actually, I...
Well, and I'll, what is five or three and seven currently allowed in Old Shakopee?
Yes.
Okay, because that's about as tight as you wanna go.
I agree, and so one side, it's not, it's not ten and then ten, it's, it's usually what they ask for is five and seven, so it's twelve or, or fifteen.
Or five and fives, minimum.
So, so, Mayor and Council, this goes back to, we're seeing, we were recently at a planning, um, meeting that the city attorney was at of all the other cities, and what we're seeing, particularly from all the home developers, is people don't want smaller houses, they want smaller lots. So we're seeing very large houses on very small lots, because people don't wanna give up their large houses, and they're tired of maintaining their yards. And I think we're starting to see that in Shakopee, um, with all the requests we're getting for all these variances. This is an attempt to try and say, if you want what exists in traditional downtown Shakopee, you can build it out in Windermere or whatever, but you have to meet the standards.
You like the feel of the old, old network?
Reach out and touch your neighbor, yes.
Let's duplicate that elsewhere. Okay, Councilor Lehman?
Is, is another major difference between the two, is that in an R1C, let me do a hypothetical, a development comes in south of 169, wants to do an R1C zoning, um, they're gonna have to have a grid pattern, street layout?
Mayor and Council, that's correct.
And if it, if they wanna go with an R1B, they could have the winding cul-de-sac type development?
Mayor and Council, that's correct.
Okay.
So there's some give and take here. If you want the density, you gotta conform to a grid, and that's why we're calling it traditional neighborhood, 'cause that's how traditional neighborhoods are.
And actually, it's funny, in the planning world, over the last thirty years, we had the old-school grid, and then we went windy and cul-de-sac-y and bigger lots, and now they're swinging back, and now we want smaller, slight, you know, the, slightly more dense compared at seven point five, but really, it's that old-school neighborhood and a grid system, it's actually more efficient for, uh, public services, um, for, uh, roadways and, and grid system. I find it funny, 'cause I've been, you know, in the community on the planning commission years ago, and it, the, it's funny how we swing on a pendulum. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I'm back to my underlying statement here, where public sanitary sewer and water are available, doesn't mean they're installed, it just means it has to be available, so that we're not leapfrogging. That's kinda how I'm reading that, but...
Mayor, Mayor and Council, that's correct, you, you've gotta be able to, before, you can get a building permit, if you're in one of these areas, you gotta have sewer and water. So that depends on the developer has to put 'em in, otherwise you can't get a building permit.
So we don't have to have that in there, because it's covered somewhere else?
Yes, sir.
Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? If not, thank you, Michael.
Uh, the other comment I'll make, um, the city attorney, we've been publishing the full ordinances, we're now doing summaries, so on your desk tonight is a very short summary of this ordinance to save on newsprint and cutting down trees. So if you do approve this, we would ask you to also adopt at the same time this summary, so that we can cut down on our publication costs.
Okay. I'm not sure I understood that.
Mayor and Council, so typically, we have to publish the entire ordinance word-for-word, and it can take up an entire page in the newspaper, depending how long it is. What you can do is you can basically do a bullet point and refer them back to the city website, 'cause now we're required by statute ten days in advance to post the ordinance. So on your desktop was the, uh, drafted by the city attorney, a summary of the ordinance that we could publish without having to publish the entire ordinance.
Jim?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, actually, the two summaries that you have in front of you are for the next two agenda items, there's not a summary, there's not a summary for this one.
Correct, I apologize.
So it's, he's anticipating the next two ones and telling you there's gonna be the summary for the next two.
Okay, but what we have in front of us on the R1C is the whole ordinance.
Yes, sir, and we will be publishing this entire ordinance.
And the only changes to it is, uh, the name and the preface.
Correct.
Motion?
Here.
Oh, Councilor Whiting?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 02018-011, uh, zoning text amendment for R1C, Old Shakopee Residential Zone language.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Mokel. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. 9C2, ordinance to allow outdoor cafe and B3 in public right-of-way and plazas. Mr. Kurski, welcome back.
Mayor and Council, this is formalizing something that's been kind of occurring ad hoc, um, throughout the Twin Cities. Cities have been adopting almost identical ordinances, so, um, City of Carver just adopted this probably two, three months ago, so we actually modeled ours off of theirs, but it's pretty common to just about every city in the Twin Cities. So, basically, it amends, um, Section 151-002 to create a definition for outdoor cafes. It allows outdoor cafes as permitted as accessory uses in the central business zone, which is that B3 area. The ordinance also amends the city code to add requirements that must be met for an outdoor cafe, including liability insurance, which is something we had not been getting. The ordinance sets four specific prohibited acts for outdoor cafes, and the ordinance establishes annual fees for obtaining an annual permit. So they would be allowed basically in the red area on this map, this is the zoning map, that's the B3 area. So, um, just to cover some of the rules, an outdoor cafe must be closed and vacated on Sunday through Thursday between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, so we don't have noise issues. Uh, they may be, may remain open until 11:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays, and an exception may be granted for holidays by the administrator, so when you have Fourth of July or other holidays, they could be able to stay open later. These are, uh, the proposed fees, and the permit holder is responsible for all maintenance. So this kind of formalizes a process that also allows us to ensure they're meeting the ADA requirements. We have had some issues in the central business district.
So, Mr. Kurski, the, the permit, they have to get a permit, right? And it's not, they don't have to, they can, and if they wanna have an outdoor cafe, they do need a permit, is that correct?
Mayor and Council, that's correct.
And then they have to provide additional insurance or proof of insurance, and the liability is on them?
The, they must provide the city with a certificate of their insurance, naming the city as an additional insured, and it must be for at least a million dollars.
Okay.
That's to protect us for slip and falls, people falling off their chairs, whatever could occur in that right-of-way. The other, um, thing, and I'll give you a good example, Shakopee Brew Hall, who's worked with us on this, has have several others, they currently don't have waitstaff, you would take your beer and go sit outside, well, that's a problem, because there's no control over who you're giving that beer to. So the ordinance is set up so that if you're serving alcohol, so beer, wine or spirits, you have to be served at a table, so someone from the establishment must come out, check your ID, serve you directly, and you can't carry it around.
And the, the operator, owner-operator is still ultimately responsible, whether it's out on their cafe, in their building? Kind, Councilor Whiting?
I, I just wanted to point out that in the ordinance, uh, there is a lot of requirements and a lot of rules, and so it's not just, as you stated out here, there's, uh, um, rules on, on, uh, pedestrian access and, uh, and, uh, how many inches you need for, between aisles and things like that, regarding music and smoking and lighting and cooking outdoors, so, uh, just to let the citizens at home know that there is quite a few different requirements for this process, so, uh...
And again, Mayor and Council, we had the benefit of the City of Carver just did theirs...
City of Carver did our work for us, good.
Did our work for us, plus we looked at, there's seven other cities right around here that have similar ordinances, so we wanted to be in line with them and not have too many onerous rules and regulations, but ensure that ADA requirements are met, um, that alcohol requirements are met, because we have seen instances in other cities and communities where alcohol liquor violations are an issue, and so we wanted to make sure that we were protected.
Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, this came up a couple of years ago, and I worked through it with, uh, the former, uh, development coordinator. Uh, I believe SAC charges could, uh, come into play with the outdoor seating, because they have more seating, do they count that?
So, Mayor and Council, that's something we're gonna have to work through, and we believe if it's just a couple tables and chairs, it won't be an issue, but if you add, somehow you had a big enough site where you added enough, that it would raise a red flag, they would review the SAC and WAC charges.
Okay, and then it's, uh, says lighting is not...
But if you add, somehow you had a big enough site where you added enough, that it would raise a red flag, they would review the sack and whack charges.
Okay, and then it's, uh, says lighting is not permitted. Um, are we talking lighting period, or are we talking like the little battery operated candles in the middle of the table for atmosphere?
Mayor and council, we're talking about general lighting, I think atmospheric lighting we don't really care about. But we wanted to make sure people weren't bringing out their own light fixtures and lighting up the spaces.
They're not allowed to bring a light string out and put up poles and, right.
Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I've got a couple of proposed modifications to this. First one is under number one. And it says, uh, license is established in the city fee schedule, shall be issued by the city administrator. I've got more important jobs for my, our city administrator to do than give out permits and stuff. So I would like to just change the wording that, of that issued by the city or their appointee.
So, Councilmember Lehman, the way it works is the city administrator, then the planning department, through the permit coordinator, will process these. But there needs, he has the ultimate authority, because if one is revoked, if you look through the process, it goes to the administrator. If you want to serve in the Fourth of July, you'd actually have to ask permission from the city administrator.
Well, we're, we're gonna, I wanna recommend changing that part, too. Under.
It, it has city administrator or appointee.
Right, and, and it should be, you know, I think that's more of your department.
Could be the appointee, then.
Right.
And, and that's ultimately correct, Counselor Lehman, but ultimately, I have the responsibility, and that's, that's what it boils down to.
And then under, it says somewhere in here that the tables and chairs can't have company logos or something on them. Okay? What I suggest is that if they can't have a logo on it, then underneath the table and underneath the chairs, they should have some kind of identifying marker, so if the tables and chairs are either left, you know who they are. Or if there's multiple businesses claiming it, there's actually an identification, so you know whose it is.
Councilmember, mayor and council, that's designed so that you don't have Budweiser umbrellas. If you have an establishment name on your chairs or whatever, that's okay. But taking a product, and, because typically, the cities have found that it's Budweiser, some of the water companies, Pepsi, Coke, that will put their product out, and that's considered off-premise advertising, you can have your own restaurant logo or whatever on the materials to make sure it's yours.
Then number thirteen says an exception to, to twelve, which is the hours, may be granted for holidays by the administrator. Now, clearly, that's arbitrary and capricious, because the argument can be made that this one's allowed, that one's not, this one is. And it puts people in a very bad position. So I, I think we should just, if we're gonna allow holiday hours, we should put the holiday, holiday hours right into the proposal and let the businesses decide if they want to do it during them holiday hours or not. They can, but if they don't have to.
So you would propose that we put in the holidays that it would be allowed?
At, and the hours, absolutely. Doesn't mean they have to do it, but if a business wanted to, they could. Um, that way, it doesn't appear like somebody is being allowed to by you or whoever, and somebody else is not. And then they, they don't get the opportunity to say favoritism and all that other stuff. And then how do we extend this to other areas besides B three that have on sale? Um, you know, I'm thinking Legion, VFW, Brew Halls.
Mayor and council, so this is only using the public right of way? So for instance, the American Legion, I believe, is in for a permit to have a patio in their parking lot, which is allowed as a right.
Okay.
This is strictly, if you want to go out on a sidewalk that's wide enough, or a plaza area that's wide enough, where it's public property, you're being granted basically a special right and paying for that and going through an approval process to do that. I, I believe Mr. Soltow out at, the Willie McCoy's had a huge outdoor patio, it was on private property, he can do that.
Okay, so we don't have to do it in the other areas.
Correct, sir.
Okay. And I think that's all I had.
Mr. Kurski, how much interest have you had from businesses?
Um, we, we've had some people doing it, mayor and council, not legally. And so we would like to get them into conformance, so that we don't have any liability.
Yeah, and I've seen that, I've just, you know.
I would say we'll probably have half a dozen, if, if not more.
Okay. Is there a, I didn't notice in here, but is there a restriction from the distance from their property that they can do it?
Mayor and council, you have to be adjacent, so, um, turtles, for instance, could not have their liquor license or use leapfrog across the street and do it in the Lewis Street parking lot. It'd have to be in front of their restaurant, they have to be adjacent.
But could they do it in the node that's, you know, that big node on the corner there? Can they put chairs there?
If it fits from an ADA standpoint, an access standpoint, yes.
Okay.
If they wanted, if they wanted to use the parking lot across the street, they'd get a special permit and have a function in the parking lot.
Over there, right.
But if we're talking every day, you know, um, Monca Beans is a good example, where they have a couple of tables and chairs out in front of their restaurant. And if they, let's say Domino's didn't want it, they could get permission from that building owner to extend theirs in front of Domino's, if the building owner agrees.
They still have to leave a walkway for pedestrians.
Mayor, that's correct.
Five feet.
Five feet. Yep, I saw that. Other questions of staff? Counselor Luce?
You mentioned the five feet, if, um, where you're talking with Monca Beans, if you have cars parked diagonally, when the, uh, front of the car overlaps the sidewalk, you know, by eighteen to twenty-four inches, how are we measuring? Are we measuring from where the car would be, or are we measuring from the curb?
Mayor and council, we'd measure for the right of passage, so if there was a wheelchair with somebody walking and they'd be able to clear through five feet. It'll be tough in some areas in downtown.
That's what I'm getting at, is that those sidewalks are.
ADA, I think, is a significant issue.
If not, thank you, Michael. So, Counselor Member Lehman, you had a couple ideas here.
Yeah.
The city administrator, or, oh, I'm sorry.
My suggestion would be to go ahead and get the ordinance on the table that's on the staff report, and then make a motion to amend it and see where they, where they lie.
Counselor Lehman?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number zero two, zero one eight dash zero one zero. That will amend title fifteen of the city code by adding the def, new definition of outdoor cafe and amending the central business zone B three to allow for outdoor cafes in the public right of way or plazas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, could we just add and approve the summary of the ordinance?
And the summary.
And approve the summary of the ordinance.
All right, motion maker added the summary, second. So the ordinance and the summary. Um, all right, discussion, so Counselor Lehman?
I wanted to just, uh, clean it up by saying the city and/or their appointees. And under thirteen, either put in holidays with holiday hours or not. I don't like it to be just open.
Talk about this arbitrary.
Yeah.
Talk one by one, or let's talk about point by point. So the city administrator and/or their appointee, Counselor Mokel?
So I'm not understanding how you're really changing the language of one, because you still want it put only after inspection of the planning and development department. So I guess I'm not quite sure what you're changing.
Which is why it's confused to me, too. It's really.
Everybody's weighed in there.
You know, it, it. I, it's, it's pretty clear that our city administrator is the guy that oversees all of our department heads. But what, but we have department heads to do specific functions, whether it's finance, engineering, police, whatever. And these individuals are charged by council and administrator to do their functions. And it seems to me it falls on the building and development people that do the permitting or whoever.
But I think the important piece is to remember that if Mr. Kurski is gone, we still need Ms., Mr. Reynolds to step in.
Well, Mr. Reynolds is probably, administrator at that point is gonna say, you're gonna fill in for Mr. Kurski on his vacation. Because, to be honest with you, there's probably people better than Mr. Reynolds to fill into that position than Mr. Reynolds. And, and nothing, I, I don't mean that negatively, I'm just saying that your specialty is up here. People that work in the permitting department, their specialty is right there.
Counselor Lehman?
Well, what it states is the city administrator or their appointee.
Right, and, and it just doesn't say that in thirteen, so it's not consistent.
Well, we're not talking.
We're not there yet, I think one should be left as is.
I think just leaving one as well.
Okay, so what do we do with thirteen, then?
So, just a minute, so by consensus, we're leaving number one alone?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we're gonna talk about thirteen, which is the holidays. And I'm su, you know, when I first thought about this, I thought about holidays move around, days of the week. And, Mr. Reynolds?
I have a suggestion on that. How about the, the, the normal holidays that the city recognizes? And put that language in there, and then we take that completely out and just make that, you know, that, uh, holidays normally recognized by the city, and we can even list those, there.
Labor Day, Memorial Day.
The city recognizes a lot more days than the normal business.
Fourth of July and New Year's Eve are probably important ones for this.
Yeah, because you're talking seasonal.
I'm, I'm thinking that, uh, Fourth of July and, and, I don't know, it's cold on New Year's Eve, but I don't know if people are gonna party outside New Year's Eve.
Well, that's why I think it'll be seasonal, it'll be Memorial Day, your Labor Day, and your July fourth.
Yep.
That's a problem. Mayor, I have, uh, I have a suggestion, too. If I understand the, the intent correctly, you want to set a fixed time for holidays, you don't want it to be discretionary with the city administrator.
Right, and, and I don't, I don't care if he wants to set what them hours are, I just don't want it to be viewed as, hi, I'd like to be open on a holiday, and he says no, and the neighbor one says, I want to be open on the same holiday, and he says yes, and, and I don't want that.
Another way to do, another way to do that would be to amend twelve, to just, twelve right now says they can be open till eleven PM uh, on Friday and Saturday, you could add in until twelve PM on holidays.
And, and I would just like to add that I'm taking this language to mean, if he's gonna make an exception for holidays, it's anybody who has this ordinance. Is how I'm taking the language to mean. It's not necessarily, yes, exactly.
We should either just allow holidays and set the hours and just.
And, and that's fine, but I guess that wasn't what I was reading, and I wasn't reading into what you were, I was saying anybody who had a permit.
It'll have to be holidays that fall in between the timeframe that this is actually allowed, which I think is consistent with the parking ordinance, isn't it? April first to November first, or?
November first to March thirty-first.
Yeah.
Holidays that fall within that window.
Right, so holidays that fall within that window, this timeline, this timeframe, whatever that timeframe is, till whenever.
In other words, we're just gonna eliminate thirteen. And just add on to twelve.
Yep.
Eliminate thirteen, add on to twelve, holidays, and now, we're gonna, is it year round, or this is kind of a summer thing?
Mr. Mayor, the, it's only effective, uh, number one, holidays is defined by state law, there's a list of holidays. And it's only gonna be those holidays during this period, uh, because this is.
Right.
So I, I think if you just say, add in until twelve PM on holidays to twelve, you'll be fine.
Well, I.
Or on holidays during the appropriate timeframe.
Well, well, if you leave the times just the way they are, and say including ho, holidays between this time and this time, you're covered. Because then if it's a Friday or Saturday and it's a holiday, they already got the hours in there. And if it's a holiday that lands on, uh, Sunday through Thursday, the hours are already in here. So all we really need to do is say include, holidays included between April first and, or March thirty-first and November first.
I'm, I'm confused, uh, uh, do you want them to be open on holidays till midnight, regardless of what day of the week the holidays are?
See, that's my question.
No.
I would say till eleven.
Till eleven, so I would leave the times the same, because right now, we already.
The times the same.
Yep, yep. Okay. Because Friday and Saturday, right, uh, you can, you, you're till eleven currently. So if the holiday falls on a Friday or Saturday, you're there till eleven. If the holiday falls on a weekday, you're there till ten.
Mr. Kurski?
Mayor and council, then you wouldn't need to make any change, I think the intent was, if it's on a holiday, you can stay open till eleven.
You can just take out thirteen.
Yeah, you could basically say the weekend times apply on holidays.
Right.
All right, Counselor Lehman?
Any other concerns from staff, I guess, with that?
See why he makes all the big money?
I, I would be fine with that, then, too.
So by consensus, I have a motion and a second on the table. By consensus, we are leaving the city administrator and appointee the same in number one. And by consensus, we are striking number thirteen.
And then do we want to require that the table and chairs have some kind of identifying marker?
Right, I wouldn't worry about that.
If they're.
Mayor, mayor and council, that, that has not been an issue anywhere I've ever been, I think the bigger issue is they have other stuff on them.
They're rolling around the streets, we're just gonna pick them up, put them in public works, and they're ours.
Yep.
Good enough.
You're kind of in charge of your own equipment.
That's fine.
So, motion and a second with some modifications that are acceptable to the motion maker in the second?
Yes.
Discussion? Discussion? Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Along with the summary. All right. Nine C three, replacement of the planned unit development section with a new PUD zoning. Michael, welcome back.
Mayor and council, um, I can say this started about a year ago, when we were at a meeting where they never said Shakopee, but we were referred to as the city of close enough. Because we are one of the only cities that has an overlay system, everyone else has switched to PUDs by zoning. So, we've been looking at this, and basically, this replicates just about what every city has as their model ordinance. So it repeals and replaces in its entirety, uh, one fifty-one point oh four eight, related to planned unit developments as overlays. It establishes new requirements and criteria for a PUD district for zoning, sets standards for implementation, establishes minimum design standards that a PUD must meet, and sets procedures that must be followed for the creation and amendment of a PUD. So this is the current zoning map, and believe it or not, there are tons of overlays on this map. The issue with that is that they're not codified anywhere. So if you go into one of these zones and try and find out, you have to rely on a file somewhere that exists, and I can tell you some of them don't exist, versus a PUD zone, it actually gets codified, the color changes on the map, and it gets listed as a zone, and it goes into the city zoning ordinance, so that ten years from now, people know exactly what the rules are. So conditions for a new PUD, so these are pretty standard, but, um, they provide for establishment of a planned unit, um, zoning districts in appropriate settings, situations to create, maintain a development pattern that is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan basically controls, um, where you would want PUDs to go. So they promote a creative and efficient approach to land use within the city, while at the same time protecting and promoting the health, safety, and welfare. That's a standard zoning requirement. But here's the big point, they provide for variations to the strict application of land use regulations in order to improve site design and operation, while at the same time incorporating design elements that exceed the city's standards to offset the effect of those variations. So they ensure high quality of design and design compatible with surrounding land uses, including both existing and planned. They maintain and improve efficiency of public streets and utilities, preserve and enhance site characteristics, including natural features, wetland protection, trees, open space scenic views and screening. And they allow for the mixing of land uses within a development, they encourage a variety of housing types, including affordable housing, and ensure the establishment of, of appropriate transitions between differing land uses. So, existing overlay PUDs are grandfather-in-and-remain overlays, as they are today. The only thing is that they would have to comply with the conditions from their original overlay requirements, if we can find them. And they will have to follow the new process for amending or making changes. So that if they want to come in and substantially modify, based as it's called out in the code, they either would go to the planning commissioner, they would come back to you for the existing, um, overlays that we have. So new PU, dis, PUD districts, the minimum acreage is two, requires planning commission review and city council approval. They'd show up with the specific PUD, PUD name on the zoning map, and the requirements for that PUD will now show up in the zoning code. So for instance, if you had X Y Z PUD, you would now go into the zoning code, and it would say X Y Z PUDs, here's what the requirements are if you're building in that district. And that's all I have. So I'll give you a good example, and.
You're still here.
So, we, um, typically, we don't like doing single-use PUDs. Um, they're now frowned upon by just about all of the state agencies, but there's exceptions to every rule. So Mr. Soltow has proposed a subdivision, while there are a lot of hundred-year-old, hundred-year-old oaks in the subdivision that we would like to preserve. So, his desire would be to do a single-purpose PUD, so it'd be a single-family PUD. And there's a lot of exceptions in that PUD, but a higher design standard required. In return, he would be preserving a lot of these very old oak trees. So, pretty big buffers to protect them, setting aside, uh, additional open space to protect them. That allows same number of lots, but it doesn't have to go through and get all the variances you would be need, need to do. But if you're a home builder and you come, you would know why that was set up. You would know what the setback requirements were and you would know why that P U D was created. Cause it would be as part of the implementation strategy. So you couldn't come in and five years from now decide to cut down all those oak trees, cause they would be part of the P U D.
I did have some questions here, but I, I think you've answered them here about the old P U Ds versus the new ones. And so they would still use the old standard if they didn't change anything. If they wanted to amend it, they'd have to come into the new program.
Mayor, that's correct. So a good one would be, um, Hy-Vee. They have a P U D, uh, overlay on that. And so if you remember, um, the original Starbucks that was in there was, looked like the rest of the building. If there was a new P U D, if they wanted to change that, depending how, what percentage they were changing, they'd either go to the planning commission or they would come back to you. So that Starbucks is, I think, black brick and it's completely different looking than the rest of the project. Depending where the threshold was, that would have either gone to the planning commission or come back to the city council.
Okay. Counselor Lewis?
I don't know if I understood this correctly, but the overlay map, if there is one that, um, exists, it's on the developer to bring that to your attention? Or are you gonna provide that for the developer when they come forward?
So Mayor and Council, there's probably a dozen, I haven't counted them all, existing P U D overlays that we try to track. So that's on staff and the developer to work out those issues. The only impact the new zoning would have is if they wanna change something within that P U D. Depending on what percentage it was, either it would go to the planning commissioner or it would come back to the city council for a change. Any new P U D, depending where it would be, the first action would actually come from you, creating that P U D and all the rules and regulations. If someone wanted to change something, they would have to come back either to the planning commission or the full city council.
Counselor Lehman?
I've got a whole bunch of questions. All right. First, this is a staff initiated change, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So exist, does this impact existing P U Ds that are currently in effect?
No. The only, the only change is if they wanna substantially change that, they would have to come back to you.
Okay. And we would be changing an existing P U D?
So if Hy-Vee decided they wanted to build another grocery store in their parking lot, that change would have to come back to the city council.
Okay. Recently, I just voted on a couple of comp plan amendments and zoning for three or four different projects. My understanding was I was voting for this land use and this zoning. Now, if one of them projects comes back for a P U D zone, it's not necessarily gonna be using the zoning that we adopted the first time around. Because the P U D zoning that I'm reading here allows to change the underlying zoning regulations.
So Mayor and Council, I'll give you the best example, cause it's fresh in all of our heads. Windermere is part P U D and part standard zoning. P U D by statute, you're supposed to get something better out of it.
Yep.
It's supposed to be a higher standard. I can say overlays, it's not been that successful. So had that been a new P U D, they would've had to come forward with a plan that would've showed the apartments, um, the elderly housing project, the, whatever there was, that plan would've been adopted by you. And that would've been, they would've been locked into that plan. If they decided, you know, instead of doing those townhouses, we wanna do another apartment building, they would've had to come back to you for approval.
I guess you're missing my question maybe. We currently adopted a comprehensive plan amendment on an R one B development that came before us. And at the same memo, we guided it, R one B, or we did a comprehensive plan amendment for low density. And we did a zoning change to the property to R one B.
Correct.
Okay. Now, if that same project, if this is adopted, that same project could then come back and ask for this P U D zoning on that project.
Yeah, any project that exceeds two acres, and there has to be a reason why they're asking for it. It just can't be because I want more houses.
What happens to the original vote that we had? When I, as a voting member, voted for this density and this zoning and now it's coming back changed?
I'll take that one.
You, you take that one.
Jim?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, uh, using that example, you got a comprehensive plan designation of whatever it is. It's currently zoned R one B. If they wanna come, the owner of the, any property that's in that category can come back and request a rezoning from R one B to P U D. It's, it, they can request it.
Yep.
The uses that are allowed in the P U D that they're asking for, there are only the uses that the comp plan designation allows.
Correct.
Hmm, no, that's not what this says. This says that the, the zoning, not the comp plan, is what can be modified.
No, Mr. Mayor, the zoning ordinance, this zoning ordinance that's before you says that the uses in a, in a P U D must be only those uses allowed in the comprehensive plan. That is a provision in the text of this zoning.
Well, I can read it to you what can possibly change here. It's parking requirements, setbacks. These are all zoning regulations, not land use regulations. Land use regulations on a comp plan is, is strictly to densities.
So, so for instance, Mayor and Council, if, trying to give us a for instance that we can follow here. So something was R four. Today, you cannot, the density can be from A to B. In a P U D, you can say the density, that's going to be fifteen, period. As long as it conforms, as the city attorney said, it's allowed in the comp plan to have that density. Otherwise, you would have to make a comp plan amendment and then you'd rezone it to a P U D.
Right.
It's all tied to the comp plan.
Let me, let me go a step further with this concern. A step further would be that the day that I voted in favor of a comprehensive plan amendment and an R one B zoning, I could not have thought that that same project could come back and request this P U D zoning because it didn't exist.
No, but you could've done a P U D overlay.
Could have.
Could have.
But, but again, I think R one B is a density that complies to the comp plan. You can't change that within the P U D. What you could change is.
The zoning regulations.
What you could change is some of the setbacks, you could change, you can do that in overlay right now, except you can never find where all that is. What we're doing is taking everything that's in a P U D today, that's in some agreement in the file, and putting it in the zoning code.
And a P U D is designed to get more conditions as needed or something the city wants in exchange for maybe a setback thing or et cetera like that. I always, I always think P U Ds are good for the city. Because you have a lot more control than straight zoning and all that. Cause you can extract some conditions out of a developer that may benefit your community. This overlay, and I may agree, because I believe in the last twenty-five years, we've done a lot of P U D overlays, but they're not identifiable. Um, you're saying now with this, the process would be the same, only it would be its own designation on the map.
Mayor, that's correct. And so the, the biggest difference I can tell you with a P U D zoning is you're not coming with a sketch on a pad of paper that says, this is what I'm thinking of. You've actually gotta have the pieces in place, cause that's what you must build.
But you could accomplish the same thing with the P U D overlay by putting a P on the end of the actual zoning that you make the property. Let's say you, you have a R one B project that you've already guided and zoned and they come in for a P U D overlay, so you add a P to the end of it, now you know there's a, there's a P U D on it.
And you would have Mayor and Council, I, I think, we didn't invent this, it's in every city except ours. So Windermere would've shown up as, on this map, as a Windermere P U D. And in the zoning code, it would've said, here's what's allowed, here are the setbacks required. All of that would be spelled out. And if you go to any even small city that has P U D zoning, that's it, how it's represented in their code. It's very specific.
I think that's actually adds more clarity.
It's making it worse, because like I said, when I vote for something, I know what I'm voting for. I'm voting for a forty acre R one B project. And now that's not actually what I voted for. And I, I couldn't have.
You're, you're actually getting, instead of something R one B, you're getting exactly, here is exactly where you're getting. Spelled out by density, by setback, by building type.
And is established by the city council.
No, because the R one B, uh, zoning regulations are written. I know what the guidelines are. I can actually open up a book and say, that driveway is not right, that's not right, that's not right.
Be written in a P U D, Mayor and Council, that you'll actually be able to go on the zoning code and say, I drove by a Windermere and there's some weird building going on and guess what? It doesn't conform. Cause here's what the zoning requirement is for Windermere P U D.
Mr. Mayor, I can help just a bit. I understand Councilman Lehman's concern. It's this, is that, and this, and Mr. Kurski, correct me if I'm wrong. If this were to pass and next week someone comes in and says, I want a rezoning to P U D. When you see that and the planning commission sees that application, it won't just be general stuff that's in this order. It'll be exactly what they're proposing. This units are gonna be there, this units are gonna be there, this is gonna be open space. It's gonna tell you exactly what they're gonna do.
More defined.
But it has to be within the parameters of this P U D. And they can't come in and ask for an industrial use in a residential guided property. But what, what comes before you is an exact document showing what they're going to do. And when, if you approve it, that's all they can do. So maybe that helps.
Well, but, but I think the bigger question is, is regardless of what the zoning is on the P U D that is the property that requests this new P U D, whatever the, the zoning on that property is, is at that point becomes kind of irrelevant. Because this process allows you to deviate from that underlying zoning regulation.
But it allows you to amend, to change from zoning A to zoning B. I'm using a hypothetical, which is what you could do now. You could, somebody could come in and ask property B rezoned from R one C to R one B or vice versa. They always have that right to ask for a rezoning. So that's what this process would be. They would be asking for a rezoning from R one B to P U D.
The difference is if they ask to go from R one B to R one C, you know what them regulation, regulatory differences are. You can actually look up the zoning code and read it and see the difference. We just talked about them tonight. This doesn't tell you what that is.
No, but it, it tells you what the standards are that an applicant has to meet when they come before you. And what comes before you is what we'll control.
It basically, it basically says, here's the standards in order for us to deviate from the zoning that you originally had. Zoning regulations. Yes.
No, based, Mayor and Council, what you're going to get is, this is just a framework. This is not the actual zoning. What happens is if you get the Mayor Mars P U D and you wanna build an apartment building, fourteen townhouses and seven single family homes with a big park and you're saving twenty trees, that's what the city council approves and you cannot deviate from that. And if you want to deviate from that, you gotta come back to this body and get approval.
This says under D that the sec- setback regulations, parking ratios, building heights, lots and building coverage ratios, all of them can be departed from to accomplish the purpose of the intent described in A.
But not as of right. This.
And that can be done today?
In a P U D.
In a P U D.
Yes.
In an overlay P U D.
Yep.
Correct.
The underlying zoning still plays the regulatory.
No, once you adopt that overlay.
The overlay controls.
Controls it.
So you can put a P U D overlay on something and say it's no longer R two, it's whatever we wanna make it?
This is the problem we've had with the P U D overlays, is they're like rocks hitting. So what this actually does is binds the developer to whatever you see is what gets built. Versus right now, whatever you see, we can build whatever we want. So a good example is you've seen some projects where they've brought the pretty pictures to you. They go and build it and you drive by and go, jeez, that's not what we approved. Well, guess what? It's not what you approved.
In the la- in the last five or six years, there's been developments that have come and they've sold us a sketch within a certain zone that has zoning qualifications. Yet the end result is different than the sketches that we saw. And I always like to look at, I wanna see this plan, I like that plan. If we approve this, am I gonna get this plan? Well, this is a concept plan and in six months, it might be slightly different. I think what this P U D allows is, this is the plan now, this is the building we're gonna get. And this is gonna be the layout, this is gonna be the open space, this is gonna be where the drainage is.
These are the trees we're saving.
Huh? And, yeah. With the conditions that can benefit the community.
On the first page, last paragraph, it says a P U D zoning should only be used for single use developments like a single family subdivision. On the following pages, it says it allows for mixing of land uses within a development.
This, this is like a menu. So you pick.
Tagoulash menu in my.
Well.
Whatever you wanna eat, I guess.
Right.
Because.
Well, you can make it whatever you wanna make. So you can basically take a person that votes for a particular project and bring that project back and change it.
If you vote for it, it is what has to be built.
If I say the building is gonna be six stories tall and it's gonna be made out of pink brick and it's gonna have a parking ratio of one point five and it's gonna have forty-seven historic trees on it, that's what I have to build. And when you drive by and it's not that way, they get a stop work order. If they come back and say, I can't find pink, pink brick, you all have to make that change.
Well, I'm not there yet. I, I'm just reminded of the Hy-Vee apartments that what, what we voted on didn't actually happen, so.
This would, this would control that.
Hmm, no, this would actually make it much easier to deviate.
It would not make it more easy to deviate. This is actually locking in the developer into what you approve.
Okay. Well, we'll have to, you'll have to convince me more.
I, I don't think we can convince you.
Yeah. Um, more discussion of staff.
I'll do that.
If not, thank you. Uh, motion, Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number zero two zero one eight dash zero zero nine that amends title fifteen land use section one five one point zero four eight planned unit development district and replaces the current section and approve the summary.
I have a motion on the table. In a second, Counselor Moko?
Yes.
Uh, is a second on that? Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to the city bill list for our review there. Uh, ten B liaison and administration report. Uh, Counselor Lehman?
School board meeting, they had a, uh, goals and list from, was it January of seventeen? For the year, for twenty seventeen. And they actually sent me a copy of that of what their actual goals were and what they accomplished and what the timelines were on some of it. I'll, uh, I'll forward that in email form to city administrator to get out to the rest of ya. I mean, they, they did have some decent goals made and they did achieve some of them. Um, it's just a precarious situation that they're in. Um, Memorial Day, I was asked to be the M C at the Memorial Day Services, Memorial Park. I did state that on behalf of the Shakopee mayor and the council.
Mm-hmm.
We'd like to welcome everybody here and thank you for coming. Uh, it was a good service, um, kind of a somber day. And I thank all those that sacrificed it all. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Um, June twenty-third, I met with the county, county commissioner and their staff and city.
May twenty-third.
Oh, May twenty-third. May twenty-third. Um, on May thirty-first, I attended a scale workshop, which they had a little, uh, interactive, uh, quiz that took about Scott County, jobs, homes, income. Um, I will produce a copy of it and it will be sent out to, uh, council members. It was pretty good. They also had a presentation on parks and we're having a big committee over parks in the future. Uh, the park director of Savage spoke. And it's, uh, he spoke, you know, he's looking at. at changing demographics, diversity, the aging, and how that affects our parks. They're more into trails and connectivity. They brought up pickleball. But some of the activities, actually, unfortunately, I heard that softball is kind of on the decline. So, over time, new sports, lacrosse, soccer increase. So, he was really looking. He goes, "We got to be ready for the next ten or fifteen years." And parking rec has changed, and what a park is and how it acts is different. So, I thought that was real interesting. Met with city staff on the other day. Also, I want to remind everybody that tomorrow, five to seven, the Clydesdale Budweiser Horses will be in our downtown, and I think that's fabulous. I've seen them before, and it's, they're very spectacular, so...
Free beer, right?
I did not say that, or rehear that.
Under Mayor.
But, thank you for that. But that is my report. Counsel Whitey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wednesday, the 30th, MVTA met. They're seeking public input on the circulator buses, the Route 497 and Route 499. The public meeting for that was tonight. But if you didn't make it, you can still submit input up to June 8th via email at mvta@mvta.com, or by phone, if you choose. Another thing they talked about at the meeting is working on a grant, and I believe the mayor supplied a letter for that, for a low or knowing emissions federal grant. That came up and was kind of one of those quick things. So, appreciate that, and we'll see if that comes through. I also wanted to point out, I think you all probably got this letter on the local leaders water institute. Counsel Luce and I have attended the, one of the events that took, that they're going to be redoing this summer. So, I would encourage anybody to take a look at that, and if you could make that, I thought it was well worth it. There's a couple different days and different events going on with that. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel Whitey. Counsel Lu, or Moco?
I had the SPUC meeting on May 21st on the water side. They finished Ridge Creek and Recon on Shakopee Avenue. They had three, four, and one tanks cleaned. They also brought the Riverview Booster Station project online. They changed the source from Savage to SPUC on May 15th at 1:26 PM precisely. They did flush 429,000 gallons, or I'm sorry, there was 429,000 gallons, and 20,000 of it was, or 200,000 was flushing, where it's an average of 37,000 a day, gallons a day. On the electric side, there was three outages. One on 511, County Road, car hit a pole. On 512, Dan Boo, view underground, two customers for ninety minutes. And then on 519, balloons from a birthday party got on the power lines at a farmhouse for 45 minutes. Upcoming projects was the pole inspections, which will actually be in this week's, because I had two SPUC meetings from our last meeting. And then the streetlights are being installed in the SMSC development. And then SPU also received the American Public Power Association's Diamond Designation for 2018 and last three years. They had to prove four proficiencies, which is reliability, safety, workforce development, and system improvement. And then on May 24th, I did, I had my LUAC meeting with, and one thing that they did present on regional parks, and the reason I bring it up is, one of the conversations turns toward not just parks, but water resources. So, I did bring up about our access to the river and how we don't have a lot of access to that for recreation, and they were very open to having conversations about that. So, we'll see where that goes. And then on May 28th, the SDA meeting was canceled. And then on 64, I had my other second SPUC meeting, which on the water side, the pumpage was 11% over what was budgeted. Their water main adjustments on 83. They also, obviously, construction, I was shorthanded. So, some of the things that came on were Ridge Creek second, Windermere second, 2018 recon. And then on the electric side, they did hit the peak on the 29th of 98.2 megawatt hours. That was the day that was the hot day. And then between 3:30 and 4, where four to six is usually their peak, so that was the time that it came online. And then they had seven outages from their last meeting. One was 5:22, a squirrel for 38 minutes for customers. Twenty, on the 26th was from the storms. They had 55 minutes for 10 customers. There was another one for 62 minutes for 55 customers. They had a failure on that one. And then on 5:28, there was wind, and so they had 75 minutes for one customer and another 33 minutes for 13 customers. And then they had a cutoff fail on the 31st, so they had 10 customers out for 50 minutes. The other thing that happened over the weekend during, which was actually on the Monday of the holiday, was the battery charger failed in one of the substations. So, they did have a switch load, and they got that taken care of before any customers were out. And that is what I have for my report.
You've been busy.
So, do you think the water usage overage was from all that flushing that you're talking about?
I don't know. You know, it's, it's kind of now looking back at notes from two different meetings, you kind of wonder.
Counsel Lehman?
The 62-minute one with most power outages was our neighborhood, my neighborhood, actually.
Yeah.
And it was, right behind my garage in the alley, it was, we saw it happen. The flames shot out the top of the thing.
Mm-hmm.
And the big insulator thing that goes from the high voltage through the insulator to the transformer, it blew that thing completely apart. It was sitting on the alley, just smoking, you know?
Yeah.
Don't know what caused it, but they said they put in a new updated version of that isolator, and they said that I'm kind of really old.
Right.
So, I mean, when you get that kind of years out of it, that's pretty decent that they're going to do that.
Well, it's a squirrel holding birthday.
No, no. And apparently, another one went by Spencer, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Something on that whole leg or something on...
Well, and that brings me, I did forget that there was 3,825 poles inspected. And so then there's a few that they're in replaceable mode, and they'll redo some of them as, or they didn't get some of them inspected that are going to be going through conversion anyway.
You know, it was pretty quick, considering it was a holiday weekend.
Yeah.
I was pretty, pretty impressed at, you know, an hour.
Does anybody know when they change those poles? Do they change those insulators that you're talking about?
No, they changed it right on top of the pole.
I know, at the, at the issue, but when they do those...
When they do the poles, yeah.
Change them.
It depends on what it's being, and what type of pole it is, so, I guess.
I mean, I picked a thing up out of the alley, probably half hour later, and it's still pretty hot. It was like, oh, don't touch it yet.
Don't touch that. Thank you very much for that. Now, on to our administrative report. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, the Clydesdales are in town from five to seven tomorrow night. If you don't want to have fun, you can actually come to Darren and I's budget listening session, which will be at 6:30 at the library on Wednesday night. If you can't make that one, we actually have another one at 10:30 at the library on Thursday. Our scheduling this year wasn't the best when it came to the Clydesdales in our budget session. A couple other dates to, for the public, so you can plan ahead. We all, the city council will be having an envisioned Shakopee workshop on 26 June. We will have an EDA goals workshop as part of our normal council meeting, or I guess it's an EDA meeting then, on the 17th of July. And we're currently working on the list of updated policies that Counsel Lehman had requested at our last meeting. We had an individual retire from our police commission recently. And in the almost three years that I've been here, I've been incredibly touched and impressed with Joan Lynch and the service that she has given this community over decades. And I had the opportunity to thank her for her service today. And if, if she could, she would still be part of that police commission. There are very few people that have the kind of dedication, she's a former city councilwoman, that have the dedication that Joan has had. And I want to personally thank her for all that she's done for this community. Personally, thank her for her mentorship. And, and she is going to be sorely missed. She cannot be replaced on the police commission. She's truly one of a kind. And I just wanted to make sure that people understood that she's, she's one of the good ones. Moving on in regards to, unfortunately, discussing some things that aren't so good. I received an email from the individual who was, the city has been working with to fix the encroachment on our parkland. And even though Counsel Luce has been, once again, told not to be up there bothering people, the individual emailed me, "I want to let you know my wife saw Mike Luce in the cul-de-sac behind our home on Sunday evening. We have seen him in our neighborhood on several occasions, but this time, my wife was able to get a short recording of him leaving the area. My wife was inside our home when she originally saw Mike Luce in the cul-de-sac looking towards our home. She went out on the deck and recorded his vehicle leaving in the distance. I thought this was something you should be informed of. I also wanted to state that I believe Mike Luce is directly responsible for the breakdown of negotiations to secure a new easement with my neighbor. And this interaction occurred, by the way, after Councilman Luce had been sanctioned by this body. The negotiation with my neighbor was smooth and productive until Mike Luce inserted himself into the process by visiting my neighbor's home on several occasions. I also don't appreciate the letter to the editor that Mike Luce submitted. In my opinion, Mike's letter was misleading and depicted my family in a poor light. I appreciate the courtesy the rest of the City of Shakopee staff have shown in this situation and the understanding that this is a complex scenario. I have informed Steve Lilly-Hogg of my plans to comply, and I have secured excavating equipment to remove the aggregate from the encroachment area as requested." We currently have two outstanding requests for Counsel Luce's emails. Counsel Luce, I've emailed you four, five, six times at this point. Do you...
Sounds similar to the ones I send you, and you never respond to.
Counsel...
By the way, Clarny Hills is a public street. Anyone can drive on the street any time, as often as they want.
Did you, were you up there at a service call, or...
That's in, that's not pertinent.
It's what?
Well, not pertinent if I was up there on a service call, or if I was on a joyride.
On a joyride on a Sunday night in a cul-de-sac. Okay.
Counsel Luce, do you intend on complying with state law or not? You're the most prolific requester of records, and now somebody, actually, two different organizations have requested your records. Do you intend to comply?
I'll think about it.
Well, and I think that says it all. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds, thank you. Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, I just wanted to comment on Joan Lynch. The one thing I was missing in the administrator's report is, not only did she work for the public, but she also worked at the CAP agency for many, many years, serving the community in need. Heard my mother go way back working at the CAP agency. So, it's much broader than just her public service. It's, it's overall community service for many, many, many years.
She was on that board at CAP for a long time.
Yes, yes. And I've worked with her a few times in a couple different projects. Yep, she's a, you're right, they don't come any better.
All right. Other business before this board? Counsel Luce?
I have a presentation to make to Mr. Nelson, if he could come up here. Save me the getting up. Your legs are younger than mine. Canterbury's third year of the $5,000 for the playground. I want to thank them for their keeping up with their promise. They've done it for three years. They've got one more to go. So, hopefully, that'll get your books even.
Very good. Anything else? Anything else? All right. We will move forward then to our closed session for a review of our city administrator, so...
Jim, do you have the numbers? Oh, yes. It's pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13.04. Close enough.
Motion to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 13.04, Chapter D.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We will stand in closed session. So, I have a motion to come out of closed session by Counsel Lehman, second by Wa, Counsel Whitey. Discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So, we just came out of closed session for a review of our city administrator. We took absolutely no action, and here we are. Is there any other business before this board? If not, Counsel Whitey?
Make a motion to adjourn to June 19th at 7:00 PM. Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 11:02.